... Please stand clear. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great Constitution, which stands one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Kevin.
Flynn.
She's delayed.
Ms. Huer?
Here.
Ms. Patchen?
She's excused.
Mr. Rakowski?
Here.
Mr. Sam?
Yeah.
Mr. Wolf?
Absent.
Mr. Zoff?
Here.
This is Gaston.
We're gonna say absent, I haven't heard from her.
Mr. White?
Present. Please review the fireworks.
Fire ignites are in the rear of the LGI.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, for 1.05 to be later on in the board meeting, so there's other people present. Is anybody here? Anybody second that?
Second.
I would like to have it, it was, uh, Josie, um, Devatni. We're gonna do a moment of silence, I'd like to do that with at least everybody here. So, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we'll do that, we'll change it and put it after the executive session. Any motion to adjourn to executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
To review the history, employment history of a particular individual for the purpose of discussion collective bargaining with the CSCE and the Beacon Fair Professionals Association Seek Legal Advice from the School Attorney State Vol. Conning Privilege Board we took expect to return at 8:30.
The same something. Yeah. What do you say? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Corderoni, Mr. White, and Board of Education members. I'd like to take the opportunity at workshop this evening to be able to share highlights of the Instructional Services Division of the district. As you know, we've done some reconfiguration within the district, and we're working towards a common, a common goal of being able to do our, our work in, in integrated and interdepartmental manner. So, you know, for all of us across the district know that, you know, this kind, this guides and develops our work. And so, for us, in moving forward and in a systems change approach, we have to make every, make every moment and every step that we move forward count. And so, that's the work that's been the focus for us, certainly since my stepping in in July in this role. This is about ensuring that at every level, we have purpose, we have value, and we have meaning to the work that we're doing. And it's ensuring that we're looking towards both our short-term and our long-range goals. The focus of the work and the, the need to develop an Instructional Services Division is about ensuring that we have established systems and structures. And so, for all of us, we began in September as we taught, as we opened up schools and sharing with all of our staff that for us, we've operated within independent departments and working through a silo approach. And in order for, for our work to have meaning for what our students need for us to do and enable to, in order for those systems to become responsive and effective in, in challenging and meeting the needs of our students and families and our staff, it was, it was pushing us in a direction to move in, in an interdependent way. And so, in the, in the Division of Instructional Services, of which I have supervision and oversight responsibility, it encompasses four, four department levels. And so, it is about our work in curriculum and instruction under the leadership of Mr. Eric Wright, our Executive Director. It's about our work through Pupil Personnel Services, through the leadership and direction of Ms. Dawn Condello. It's about Athletics, Physical Education, Recreation and Health Services, under our leadership of Mr. Nemeczek. It's about human resources on, for our instructional staff. And human resources, as you know, is an area that doesn't have a direct midline supervisory responsibility. That's a role that Ms. Corderoni is the, in her role as Deputy Superintendent and myself in the role of Assistant Superintendent, share for instructional service on my end, but also for our civil service employees on the Deputy Superintendent's end. So today, as it relates to this, we'll be talking about things as it relates to instructional staffing. We began the work for all of our staff in talking about what the purpose and intention of moving towards interdependence meant. And so, for us, this is a metaphor to the work that we were embarking on at the beginning of the year. We, again, begin to work and create systems where we're learning and sharing and supporting the work among and within our departments. This begins with where, we start with one, identifying the strengths that we have, taking opportunity to celebrate what those strengths are, looking really closely at what our needs are, and how we identify where we have gaps in that. Ultimately, that, that pushes us to where we're striving to be and the, the direction we're moving forward in, into the future. Specifically, out of Instructional Services, this is about us having opportunity to develop cohesive and consistent data-driven instruction and intervention that's aligned to ensure that the students have mastery of learning standards at, at every level of the district. This is about us creating and refining self-sustaining school-level processes that are able to produce the results that we're looking for with regard to students. It's also about ensuring that we have targeted and individualized support for our students and families that is a, that increases the students' opportunities to be in school and to be in receipt of high-quality instruction. In order to make those things happen, for us as a district, it's forcing ourselves in a change process to be able, to think about from many lenses and to listen to multiple voices about where we are and where, where our current practices exist in a comfort level, to where we need to be and where that pushes us to reach beyond our boundaries. In a change process, the process of change is sometimes not so comfortable, but it's about us ensuring that what we're building and what we're working on is the goal of what is going to make for a dynamic and robust system for all of our students, all of our families, and promote the professional growth of all of our staff. Here's where we, as a, as a division, are, are finding ourselves in the place of. We're making some, some inroads of the way we go about our collaborative and interdependent work. We're not there yet, but we know that we're in that process and on that way. Ultimately, for us, this is about how we take all the unique roles of each department and we begin to blend those together towards our com, our common end purpose. What I'd like to be able to highlight for you tonight are where, where we are and celebrate the progress and the steps along the way. In the day-to-day work that we're doing, it can be easy to be overwhelmed by staff, for staff and families at many levels, that everything is critical, everything needs to change, and there's a, a level at which all changes don't happen at the same time. What we have to be able to pay attention to is how we celebrate thinking about where were we six months ago, where were we 12 months ago, where were we 24 months ago, and where are we now in comparison to that. Here's what I want to be able to acknowledge and celebrate under the leadership of Mr. Wright, through curriculum and instruction and assessment. Since he began in, in his role and the work that he has been doing on a collaborative level with our, with our school-level principals and assistant principals, our department, our department leaders at the district level, and with all our staff across the district. We've been able to ensure that we had instructional materials for elementary math and the ELA modules. He's put in place mechanisms so that we're building and expanding upon the resources and the implementation of Fanta's and Pennell intervention kits at the, in the elementary classrooms. We're building supplemental support services through supplementary reading software of reading plus through, for grades, grades three through five, but also enabling access for our K-2 classroom teachers. We went through a process with Mr. Riley at the start of the year of inventorying our graphing calculators, ensuring for, know that for us, it was important to have a sense of what is our working equipment and, and what is not. Graphing calculators are not a luxury to have, they're a necessary part of the math curriculum at the high school level. We were able to identify those that were in need of replacement, and we're building a six, a, a process in place to reinventory and assess the functionality of those. We purchased 30 to start with at the start of this year because it was a necessity. We would have students that did, that had partially functioning or not functioning equipment, and that's an, that's an access issue. So that, we were, we were pleased we were able to take a look at. We, at the, at the, before school started, what we built in also with Mr. Riley as part of the math department for 612, the, the procurement of the integrated algebra textbooks that needed to be replenished. We use working textbooks where students use both consumable, that's also their text-based material. Spanish, because we've been broadening the Spanish course of participation, we found there was a need that we needed to, we needed to purchase some additional classroom sets for the Spanish text so that all students had access in their classrooms with their teachers. Chemistry textbooks were in need of, of replenishment. On a process end, as you, as you know, and you have an awareness, Mr. Wright's been able to lead the literacy initiative and get that realigned with where we are right now and where, and where we're headed. They've put in, he's put into place a restructuring of the monthly curriculum meetings for elementary and secondary content coordinators, and they're working together as a planning group so that that work has purpose and meaning and is a mechanism both for information as well as the curriculum, you know, assessment and pacing calendar work that's in process. He's put into place and restructured the monthly meetings for elementary principals and secondary principals so that those meeting times have purpose and intention in supporting our school-level leaders in developing their capacity and skills to continue and provide the curriculum leadership on a day-to-day basis. He's put into place monthly meetings and continuing to, those with our reading teachers and our teachers of our English language learners, so that they have opportunity, because they are small in numbers, to be able to work collaboratively together across, across schools. There's a professional development plan that's in final revision stage that came out of the collaborative work both through the summer and the start of the school year that will be shared with you for review and, and, and shared out publicly at the December meeting. Mr. Wright, along with Ms. Condello, have worked, and Mr. Wright's been leading a district group, but together, to look at how the intersection of response to intervention from both a general education intervention approach, as well as the output of what ends up or may end up as referral to the Committees on Special Education, we have in place, and looking to create the framework expectations at a district level so that each school can begin, can implement, and we can begin to build consistency of practice from school to school. That's a lot of, of work, and a tremendous, from everyone's contributions through curriculum instruction and assessment that has occurred in a very short window of time, and so I want us to be able to celebrate that. In the Division of Pupil Personnel Services, a reminder, Ms. Condello has many different aspects of student-based services under her, under her supervision and leadership. For the Pupil Personnel Department, with Ms. Condello, Student IEP Implementation and the CSC and CPSC, Preschool and School Age Committees on Special Education, have been in full implementation. As you may be aware, there's been a restructuring of roles, of quick, moving to quick assessment, looking at what the gaps have been in past practice over the, the changes we began making over the past 12 months, and in reflection of the way the department had been functioning over the prior eight years. So, under Ms. Condello's leadership, this is about redefining and restructuring roles of the Director of PPS, of creating a Supervisor of Special Education, of looking at the role of our teacher that's in position as a CPSC and a CSC Chairperson, of looking and expanding on the role of school psychologist as a sub-CSC Chairperson. So these changes are important because what we know and what we heard about was that families needed to have a more direct day-to-day contact, and so we've created those mechanisms. So one, that there is that point of, point of person and point of contact that is not just for them for a process, but also there as part of the school and the school culture that their children are a part of. So that's a step forward that we've made. Ms. Condello's worked to, with the staff to set in place a procurement process so that the needs of our students with IEPs for adaptive equipment and other instructional materials pursuant to what's, what their needs are identified in their IEPs are in place and ready for students. We've had a refinement and a development of our internal process, procedures and protocols, which is leading to the development of a staff handbook for Pupil Personnel Service staff. What that will make clear is, is what, what are the particular forms, the process, the way, the timelines, that all staff at various levels of various components of the process work to put into place. There's been an updating of process procedures and documentation forms for McKinney-Vinto that align with the new regulations. The laws, the federal laws around McKinney-Vinto are changing. Ms. Condello will be going to some of those information sessions to ensure that the things that we've begun to put into place stay in alignment with the, the current laws, but our social workers have been equipped and empowered now so that we can build consistency of practice across the district and from school to school. There's been a coordinated effort of planning and development of emergency care plans in collaboration with health services, so cross-departmental work for our students with IEPs that may have specific medical or allergy-related needs that we need to have addressed and be on file with, with health services and not, and not just only noted in a student's IEP. There's been implementation of the monthly meeting structures for classroom teachers, for our school psychologists, our school social workers, our speech therapists, and our occupational therapists. We began putting these into place a year ago. Ms. Condello's been able to refine and build with them specific outcomes and goals so that those meetings build upon from, from month to month of the goals for the department. There's been an effort for targeted professional development for our key PPS staff, access, access through BOSIs and through the Regional Special Ed Technical Assistance Center. Those are free professional development opportunities, and Ms. Condello's been working with the staff to identify what supports individual as well as collective needs for professional learning. There's been work that's been, that's been started with IEP direct training for our clerical staff. It's a huge undertaking with cleaning up as requirements change from time to time and the planning and logistics of components of the maintenance of I, of the system, the software system by which we use for tracking, monitoring, and documenting the needs of individual student education plans. And so that work is in process. There's been, there's been the start of the assessment of a delivery of continuum of service that informs continued program development. And again, we'll, you'll see outputs of that as it relates to our budget planning process this year. So again, in a very short period of time, from August through now, under Ms. Condello's leadership, Pupil Personnel as a department is in full motion in moving, moving us forward. In Athletics and Health, Athletics, Physical Education, Health Services and Recreation, you heard from Mr. Nemeczek at the prior, at the prior board meeting in terms of an update and a celebration of our fall student athletes. Just wanna, I wanna highlight and take a moment to highlight some additional things in the time since then. So, student athletic scholarships, we'd like to acknowledge that Lauren Shutter was just signed on last week for, with Pace University with the women's basketball team. We're very proud of her and her accomplishments, and we know that we'll, we may have other students and student recognitions as we continue to move forward. We're gonna hear, we're gonna hear tonight in a, in a few moments, I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Nemeczek so that we can acknowledge Ms. Pomerico. She was recently awarded from the New York State Association of Physical Education, Health, Recreation and Dance from the Southeastern Zone. She was nominated and selected as Teacher of the Year, and so we're going to acknowledge that with the, with the Physical Education Department in a few moments. I'd like to also acknowledge accomplishments out of Mr. Nemeczek's department. The state, we have a statewide committee member, Mary Ann Cirillo. She's been participatory in the statewide group that's been doing the research, the recommendations to the, to the Office of the State Education Department for the changes in the learn, recommendations for revision to the learning standards, as well as the development of statewide learning guides for the implementation. So we're very proud to have her as both a member of our department as well as having a statewide leadership role. In Health Services, we were able, through the budget process, as you, as you're aware, but to put into place the role of a floating nurse substitute, that has helped us be able to address, as we have the need on a, on a day-to-day substitute basis, coverage for our schools so that our health offices and the students within those schools still have access to nursing services without having to pull those, those supports away from another school to, to cover. So this allows us greater latitude to ensure that we're not leaving any one building short-changed. Through Health Services, they've also been working in a coordinated way, both with Pupil Personnel, as I had mentioned, in the development and the co, the co-planning and implementation of emergency care plans for students with IEPs, as well as 504s. They also, they also have been working in coordination collaboration with food service. So that information that's known between the health offices of our school, as well as our foods, as a, as well as our food service and our cafeteria within any schools, has the same information as it relates to student allergy and food, and food planning needs. And so what we identified was, we were working on a lot of information in separate entities and the value of being able to quickly be able to bridge that, bridge that gap. So that's work that has begun and is in place. So again, since the start of the school year, we've been making strides and accomplishments through Athletics, PE, Health Services and Recreation. Special projects under Ms. Kel, under Ms. Kellogg, focused in, in these broad areas of, of district-level functioning. Since, since we began in, in August in this work, she's been, she's worked to initiate a district planning group to review the K-12 insight survey data that we administered and we received back from the end of last school year into the summer. That information, feedback from our students, families and staff, is being used to help plan quarterly parent engagement activities. And so, I look forward to being able to share with you announcements as to the work of the group that she's pulled together in collaboration with PTO input as to what future, future parent and family activities will be moving forward. She's been in a process of reviewing policies and procedures for our district's registration process, verification of residency, and other student attendance matters. There's been a, a work towards how we're processing and submitting our, our school-level arts and ed COSER activity proposals, and she's the point of contact in, in getting that, that piece of, of inform, of the request process from our schools through district approval and to BOSIs for COSER approval. She's been in a process of reviewing home instruction procedures in collaboration with the administrate, with the administrative home instructive, instruction coordinators, so that what we're building are consistent process procedures and protocols, as well as mechanisms to collect data so that we can look for what, what our needs of our students are, are demonstrating through access to home instruction. There's been an initiation of our district, of district-wide PBIS meetings, so that among all schools PBIS teams, there's opportunity to bring representation from the school-level teams to a district team with the purpose of building communication and collaboration, of sharing and learning from each other, of being able to assess where we are in the implementation of all of those programming, as well as to be able to create opportunities to build off of each school's process. So she's also worked on behalf of the district to, and initiated a revision of the process procedures and protocols as it relates to the Dignity for All Students Act, of working to ensure that our forms and our procedural guidance are in line with the, with the, the Human Resources. So this is on the instructional side of the house, so for all of our certificated staff. This is the work that we do with recruitment, hiring and retention. This is about how we're ensuring certification and tenure of our, of our employed staff. It's about the maintenance of personnel records, and it's about the addressing personnel-related Terms of Human Resources, it's an area where we've, where we've been focusing at our attention, where we've been working across and among many stakeholders, where we're working closely with our, our school-level staff who hold the, the bulk of responsibility of the immediate implementation of, of hiring practices. What, what we're celebrating the progress of is that we've created an administrative staff handbook with the purpose of being able to systematize the process, the procedures and the protocols for our instructional staff for hiring. That's been through a development process, it's been through a review process, it's been through a process of listening to feedback from various stakeholders, both within the school district, as well among and around, within the community. It's about the revision of that, of those processes, and ultimately ensuring that they're aligned with federal and state laws that govern recruitment and hiring, both under the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, or the EEOC, as well as New York State Human Rights Laws. We need to ensure that our practices and what we, where we desire to be, that stay aligned with what, what are the parameters within federal and state, state laws. In terms of that, the, the final revised document, we're anticipating that at the, December 15th Administrative Council will be sharing that, rolling it out to the administrative team. That will be fully in place and ready to be enacted at that, at that, at that point. Be happy to, you know, talk or answer questions specific to it, or share with the Board of Education a final document if, if you'd like. Our administrative team hasn't seen that yet, and we're moving forward in that process. But that's the place where we're at with its development. In terms of the process itself, we've outlined a seven-step hiring process so that it's ensuring consistency and equity of our hiring practices and building coherence among all our stakeholder roles. The roles of our principals, the district-level administrators, our personnel staff, our superintendent and you as the Board of Education. I'll highlight that in a, in a couple of moments. We're creating opportunities for career ladder pathways so that it's supportive of teacher and leaders, and administrative leadership development. There are funding opportunities that can, that are made available from time to time, both at a state, a state education and a federal level, and so there are certain components that we want to begin to build so that when those funding opportunities arise again, we'll be prepared for those. We have successfully hired 39 highly qualified instructional staff since July 1 of, I'm sorry, that says 2017, it's 2016. We are in a process with focus in, in instructional HR. We've identified three college recruiting fairs that we, as a district, are gonna participate in during the winter months of 2017, so between February and March, so that we begin a recruitment process for anticipated vacancies that begin much, much earlier to the May budget vote. And so, we're looking to be, to begin that with a, a set of administrative leaders that will be able to be ambassadors for the district, and we're going to, we're going to be at several SUNY schools, we're gonna be at Teachers College, and we're also looking into Mount St. Mary's. So more, more to come with that, but that's one active step we're taking as we move our hiring practice forward. We're anticipating, as the years continue, that we need to go to work towards active recruitment of, of the staff that we need for us in the district. Note that, you know, we talk about substitute coverage being difficult. Also note that statewide, we have, we have a, a significant decrease in the number of college students going into teacher preparation programs. So two years ago, there were 68,000 students across the state in college teacher prep programs that were preparing for outcomes and degrees to go into the teaching workforce. As of this year, that data was reported through the, through the system and shared with personnel administrators across the state. It's currently being enrollment of 48,000. So that alone is creating, if no other factors are considered, that alone is create, is going to- So that alone is creating, if no other factors are considered, that alone is going to create a workforce shortage across the state. Never mind that all of the districts are looking to create a level of staffing that is able to meet the needs of all of their students. And so there's also geographic considerations and economic considerations that become factors of the process. We're going to work with purpose and intention, so that what we do is create a profile of the district that gives people that are aspiring to be new teachers into the workforce something that they want to come to be a part of here in Beacon. We want to be proud of what we're accomplishing. We want to be proud of the direction we're headed in, and that's really a critical component of our recruitment approach as we move forward. We're in a process of finalizing our staff EEOC report, which requires an accounting of the demographics of all our employees at all levels. It is not finalized and verified data. It's, I would say, almost to completion and ready for superintendent's review. The anticipation is that it'll be published on our district website by December 5th, right after Thanksgiving is when the superintendent will be looking at it to review and finalize. In terms of the steps of the hiring process, note that this is during our, for the implementation of where we are right now during this transitional time. What's important is we're in a process to find our new superintendent and new leader of the district. It's important that we have a solid process in place, but one that has some level of flexibility, so that a new superintendent can come in, assess where we're at, and be able to make adjustments without derailing the whole system. So that and us knowing that we're still in some transition, but we need to have a level of process and procedures that we're following. Here's what the process looks like that builds off of the process we've had and knowing that there's specificity in the actions that go with each of these processes. And so we've identified is what takes us through from identifying and requesting the need for a vacancy posting that usually comes by the way of a school-level leader identifying that either someone is going to be unable to fulfill their work responsibilities for a short-term need and may be going on some level of a medical-based need. It may be that someone is retiring. It may be that someone has identified that they're resigning their position. That is done in collaboration between principals and district-level administrators. From there and through that process of approval and sign-off, there's a process in the Personnel Department through our Personnel Assistant of creating the vacancy posting. That information goes out and is posted through a variety of means, of both our database systems, such as OLS Mid-Hudson Cooperative Recruitment, as well as making decisions of posting and announcing through various employment bulletins, through colleges and sometimes through the newspaper. Once we, there also is a whole internal reporting process of posting, so no internal postings are a part of that whole vacancy process. There's then the review of candidate credentials for review committee interviews. That is handled at the principal level and department administrative level if it's for specific department areas, such as special education, as an example. Once the processes are completed at the school level under the principal's leadership with their interview teams, the committee makes recommendations to my office and the superintendent's office for a final interview, review of the candidate's credentials, and hopefully with success an employment offer. Once we reach that point, there's a new hire packet completion. That candidate goes back to the Personnel Department, to our Personnel Assistant, and they complete the paperwork end of this. There's a process in place for candidate recommendation to the Board of Education. What I want to acknowledge is because we've always been running from behind here over the last few months, those things, six and seven kind of go together. What I'm going to offer is a recommendation, as we are moving forward in a proactive way, is that recommendations occur with review, that we would do an executive session under Personnel Matters, and that there's opportunity for that to be reviewed, and that the anticipation is at the next board meeting, that's when it comes forward on the agenda. That will, if we are working forward ahead over a several-month period of time, will align and meet within the timelines. There may be positions that are more of an immediate fill need, and we'll make those adjustments as we continue forward. But six and seven, rest of us responsibilities among the superintendent, myself in the assistant superintendent role, and you all as the Board of Education. And as you know and are aware, the superintendent makes the recommendation to you as a Board of Education, and you may vote on the resolution to accept that recommendation or to provide feedback to the superintendent otherwise. So let's talk about systems and structures on a view from the porch or from my role as assistant superintendent. Here's the progress we've been making and the celebration of success in our organizational systems. So know that there's been a restructuring of the superintendent's cabinet and weekly meetings, so that Ms. Corderonia Superintendent can hear from each of us as district department heads, as department heads of the district, and be able for us to be a problem-solving and planning group. There's a development of the professional development for our administrative leadership through the Center for Courage and Renewal. We've had some summer retreats. We've continued the work, as you're aware, through monthly facilitated sessions. That's come under the guidance and the leadership of Chip Wood, Ann Myers, and Pam Siegel. It builds off of the work of responsive classrooms. It is work that is focused on how we build trust and support and establish systems and structures within our particular leadership group. The work will continue to build and expand into next year in bringing the work to the school level. Through this work, we've been able to develop a set of administrative leadership team norms with the purpose to foster trust, to build collaboration, and to work towards communication within the group. We've had a restructuring of roles of the district department administrators to move them into a role of resource and a support network for our school-level administrators who have the responsibility of the implementation of the day-to-day work as it relates to programming, as it relates to staff supervision, as it relates to student needs. We have been working towards the successful completion of our annual professional performance review, or APPR, that will meet the New York State Ed requirements under Section 3012D. We are in a process and are awaiting the state approval of the plan. We anticipate that that is coming within the next week. We have been working towards, through my role, analysis and review of all of our data systems as it relates to my learning plan and how we're using that for professional development, of Envision, which is a migration from finance manager, that is the work of both the Finance Department and our HR and Personnel Staffing Data. We're looking at through a lens of Power School and what information that's telling us about student data and the types of reporting systems that exist and that can be accessed that better informs what's happening for our students and alerting us to needs of our students. We're working towards the continued development of the vision, mission, and core values, and ultimately that will grow into a three-year strategic plan, so that we establish a foundation for our new superintendent. This district-level, we're beginning district-level committee work in December. We will continue to have community meetings that will meet monthly, also from December through the end of the year. What we need to be able to have is both a mechanism so that all of our collective bargaining units and all of the representation of stakeholders within the district are coming together and building a framework, and that we're doing that in a coordinated way and keeping in check the needs and the feedback of community members and our school-level stakeholders. So while we're holding meetings in the evening, that can sometimes be constrictive in terms of ensuring robust participation among our school-level staff. And so we will have a two-tiered process that will be able to bridge the work that we have been doing, the work that we've established under HYA in our superintendent's search, building off the work of our K-12 insights, building off of the feedback that we've been gathering through this process so far. We're working and are initiating in early December a district-wide curriculum committee with the purpose to reestablish process procedures and protocols for curriculum development, for the monitoring of implementation, and for the procurement of instructional materials moving forward, so that we build off the work of the needs identified through school leaders and through department content coordinator leaders, that that work gets funneled up through what Mr. Wright is doing in terms of balancing the needs and priorities across all of the grade levels, across all of the departments, across all of the schools, so that we have a district-wide committee that's ensuring that all of the components of the process of curriculum development, of looking at implementation, is it matching what we're getting as student outcomes, and how we're going through a process of identifying and determining the necessary purchase of new instructional materials, so that when recommendations come forward to you as the Board of Education, you can be ensured that we've gone through a level of vetting process and identification of need, and that the needs that are identified will be matched by the recommendations that come forward to you. And so that's a piece of the process that you'll be hearing much more of and much work to be done as it moves us into the budget planning cycle in early winter. So we began with identifying that we were moving from the silos to trying to work to coordinate towards some common outcomes. Here's where we would love to be. If we're here in June, fantastic. Realistically, this is where we are, two years into the work. But we need to be able to say that we're all moving and have created systems and structures that supports all of the needs of all of the departments and works in one functional This is what I want to remind all of us of. And so when, in order for us and our work at every level, regardless of our role, to be able to have value and for it to feel meaningful, we have to embrace that our circumstances are not our conclusion. Our circumstances don't define the destiny that we move towards. We create clarity of our vision. We get clear about the goals we're working. It's driving us to create a sense of our identity and to really hold true to our core values. When those things begin to align, it's able to influence our thoughts, our actions, and build our habits. And that's what we ultimately are working towards. These are all the steps and the bright spots along the way of what we're going to continue to build on. We're going to have times where we take two steps back, but know these are with purpose and intention. We have moved a tremendous body of work forward in a very short period of time, and that comes with lots of work, sweat, and tears that come out of our district and school-level leaders, as well as every staff member that has been willing to pick up and carry the work forward under our leadership. And so for that, I'm thankful, and I'm appreciative for all of our staff and every bit of contribution that they make. Shall I take questions? You want to move to Mike?
Take a breath.
Thank you.
Table water. Does anybody have questions for Cecilia?
I think we have some sort of discussion here probably, this is a good kickoff, particularly on the hiring process. There's so much that she's covered. Hard to know where to begin, but I'm thinking that we have a great deal of interest, and we've talked many times before about the hiring process. What Mrs. Nancy Rowell Remley has addressed is the instructional area, because that's her wheelhouse. We have a district that has many other areas of hiring besides the instructional staff. Realize that has been the greatest area of public concern and occupied a lot of board time in recent months, especially last year, over the last year. But you have all the people in the nonprofessional areas as well, and I believe our hiring policies need to broaden and encompass the entirety of our hiring, all the way from janitors, bus drivers, cafeteria, and paraprofessionals, and so on. So I'm not sure if anybody's working on that in a comparable fashion to what we have presented today, but I believe that does need to occur. Another thing that concerns me is that we have reference here to an administrative staff handbook, so I'm hoping that we're going to see that before it is officially rolled out to anybody else. It's a board approval issue, in my opinion. So same thing with the seven-step process, we're going to need to look at that in detail. I think that's a whole board workshop in itself, looking at the details of this, and I appreciate seeing something in paper or on the screen at least that gives us some structure to begin talking about. I believe we have some considerable talking about in detail on each of these steps, and I would bet most of us would agree with the statement that I just made. So if not, I'd be surprised. Anyway, that's my view. I do think that it's very good to begin the recruiting process earlier. There's a lot of good in here.
Do you have a question?
Teacher numbers?
Do you have a question for Cecilia?
No, just my speech, that's all.
So why don't you wait until the board comments for that, so we can get the questions in, so she can...
I have other board comments, I think, so I don't have a real question at this point.
Okay. Mike, did you have a question?
Sure. Did I hear you that the actual procedure was going to be written December 15?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I was going to understand it was going to be, you know, we've talked about this a lot, it was going to be today, so...
The process is pretty much done. We have not rolled a final out to the administrative staff because we haven't been actively hiring anymore. We did most of it in the summer. So once it's rolled out to the administrators, it will get rolled out to you. It's not going to change much, and the other part is that it will be distributed to the board.
Okay. I just always want to see it in writing, because I want to see things like, is there provisions for, you talked about setting committees up, who decides what those committees are going to be, are we going to specify minimum types of stakeholders that are required to be part of those committees, whether it be other, you know, the public, you know, board, you know, what are the stakeholders going to be? I wanted to see that written in the procedure.
Well, the procedure now mentions, and in fact, we've had members of the community, we've had parents been on the hiring process over the summer. We don't usually have the board, because the board is the one on the final, that the superintendent makes a recommendation to the board, so we haven't involved the board members on the actual hiring process. But we did share the document. It was in the draft form, and there have been some tweaks in it. But again, just in all fairness to the administrative staff, we felt that we wanted to roll it out to them as the final first and then give it to the board. And again, it's not going to change that much from what the draft is with some comments and tweaks, so we can...
So it will have requirements for the hiring review committees to include members of the public?
So we'll...
And we've done it in the past, but I would just say is it in the procedure that that's the way we're going to operate?
So school, I can speak to that one specific question. So there is a need for that. We're including family voice as part of the stakeholder group of a committee. Is it open to members of the community at large? It would depend on what the particular hire is. I'm not going to say it's not happening, but it's not going to be a required component of every hire we're making. It would be relative to who's part of the school-level community that would represent the voices of that school for that principal and the lens. I don't know if that answers specifically the question, but...
Requirements, so I'm just going to answer requirements. Requirements are kind of hard, because unless you want requirements for every single title in the district, because some will require more, you know, participation from parents and teachers and stuff, and others won't, depending on the title. So I'm not sure what it is...
Perhaps you could provide some examples of what would require a committee, the positions that would require community involvement, and what would be the positions that would provide, that would require a different...
I mean, to be honest with you, community involvement would be some position, as example, the superintendent, which is what we did. As far as administrators in the building level, that would be more of parents, and I think that we've done that. You know, when you get to teachers, you know, sometimes parents are a little difficult. We have reached out to some of the parents that had expertise in the area we were looking at for help, so we've done... at for help, so we've done that as well. But we can, you know, in the guidance document, we'll have it a little more clear. You know, we have had parents on committees, but community members at large, I'm a little bit unsure of that part of your question.
Right, and that's, I know, that's why I want to read it to see how you crafted it, to see if it's, you know, how, you know, what the board expects, you know, in a hiring process, however you craft it.
So I guess we got to read it.
Right, we have to read it. So the next question is, you mentioned some of the steps in the process. Are there timeframes that go along that, you know, you know, T minus, you know, five months, four months, three months, you know, so you can, minimums to step through the process and we're not, we're not stuck at the end rushing to get, you know, people in place and time to support the education process.
So I think the process that we have in the handbook talks more about, you know, for us, the end result is the board meeting. So we've worked the timeline back to a board meeting. So if the board meeting is this Monday, then the paperwork and interviews and all that have to happen. I think you were talking about a more global approach with, I think Cecilia mentioned in her PowerPoint, that talks about we're not going to wait until July 1st to start putting ads out. We know that there are teachers retiring. We know once the budget passes, that's almost our clue to kind of run out there and put the postings out because that's the timeframe that we know that we have the money to support, you know, replacing the positions. We always hate to do that before the budget vote. But that's more of a practice. I don't know if that would be a guideline. In our guideline, we talk about time, timeframes for the administration to get stuff to central office.
So we backward, we backward map. So, I mean, that, that's how we started this with, with summer hires to backward map from the board meeting. So again, similar, similar type of guidance to be able to back map when we want as a goal to have our hiring in place for all the vacancies that we know or have an awareness of. And then we can set the parameters of which, where each step of the process falls in that timeline from start to finish.
Right, so I would expect you would say, in order to successfully, on a normal basis, meet, you know, your hiring and when students are looking to be hired, you know, you have to have all your requests in by January 30th, whatever. Requests have to be in as milestones. That way it'll set you up for the process to catch the college graduate cycle. That, that's the kind of thing I'm looking for, that establish a procedure.
And for the outside of the pool, and that's what you're talking about?
Right, so that we're, we're not missing the optimal times. If we document in the future, then people know when they have to have their, their cycle vacancy requested.
Right, so even, even when I return to the deputy superintendent, I would suggest to whoever the superintendent is to never post something until a budget vote is passed. So May would be the timeframe, just because you just, you just don't know. I, I'm a, you know, don't count your chickens kind of person, so if you're talking about college fairs, we, those are the winter. We already know when they are, so we're going to go out and start visiting them and at least starting to screen people. But as far as vote vacancy postings, it's really premature until you know you have a budget to replace positions. So that would be like a May thing, but we can put that out in like a timeframe.
Yeah, we'll look to see if that's what other school districts do because maybe, it sounds like it's too late because they've already graduated. Want to post, to post after the May budget vote and then do postings.
They usually post the day after the budget vote.
But you have, you already have a plan in place of who you need and...
We would know that during the budget process, huh?
Yeah, correct. So you know what you're posting for the day of the budget vote.
You'll hear that during the budget process when you talk about, usually the last budget workshop we do is on staffing. So we, we say what positions are coming up, how we've, you know, how you have breakage when you're, you're hiring new staff, and what we're going to recommend to the voters to put forward. So you'll know all of that before.
So I think we should, I do think we should outline those, you know, dates and steps in the process so we make sure that we don't miss the whole spring recruiting.
So you're looking for, for the annual basis?
Yeah, like annual cycle.
So at the end of the year, where the teachers or staff that is retiring in June, but yet we have a plan to recognize, identify them prior to the budget, then at the budget, the day after the budget posting forum, and then having a plan as to when, when do we want as the board to have those new hires for this September?
Right.
Correct. Is that what you're looking for?
That's what I'm looking at, like the annual sample, how, how we would go be clear so we don't find ourselves in the same predicament with the rest of the year.
No, I agree.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a question. So the three college fairs, are you looking at the colleges that have diverse student populations? How did you pick the college fairs?
So we're doing, we're looking to do SUNY Albany, SUNY New Paltz, and Teachers College. We also may include either one of the CUNY colleges that have a teacher prep program, or we may do Mount St. Mary's. We can, if we have enough staffing and we have a way to, that I want to propose to our administrative group to be able to balance and represent ourselves as a district across multiple, we can exceed our goal of three, that would be fabulous for this year. That's where we're looking to. I asked Ms. Fraser Woods to get the information about each of the various colleges. There were many more we looked at, but specifically, we're looking to go to those that have strong and robust teacher prep programs.
What about diverse compilation, diverse student population?
Looking at the diversity of our teaching workforce is always a consideration. As you know and may be aware, we can't recruit solely for the purpose of racial and ethnic diversity because that's a violation of the EEOC. But yes, we would go to programs that have diversified teacher preps candidates. Know also that this is, this is a struggle in the diversification and being able to ensure we've got proportionality of our teaching workforce to our student, student demographics across the state and within schools is a focus and concern because our teacher prep programs don't have strong diversification. But we will work towards that, work towards that goal.
Well, I'm glad to hear that this, you know, that you are taking on the struggle and you are working towards it. My concern is that the college fairs, I mean, there's various college fairs, and if you're going to a college that has a college fair that does not have as diverse a student population as some other ones, aren't we, you know, and I do recognize the discrimination, anti-discrimination, but I, but if we are present at college fairs that have a more diverse student population, we maybe have a better chance of recruiting a diverse teaching staff.
Well, all we can do is put ourselves out there and represent this district and provide reasons why a candidate would want to consider us as a future employer. For us, the, the questions we have to ask ourselves, and this goes slightly off of hiring, is more about how do we ensure that the workforce that we have are equipped with the knowledge and skills, that we connect and give voice to every student, every family, regardless of what their cultural, ethnic, and racial experience, background and experience are. And that's really where we put our, where we should be putting our time and attention, I think, and I look forward to the work that becomes part of our diverse, the diversity committee that you guys have been talking about. Because we're not going to bring ourselves into proportionality as a workforce of this district in the, in the, in the short term. It's, it's the goals that we keep building and working towards, but there, there are many levels of barriers and constraints to that.
Sure, and I appreciate that, but can we target a college fair that has...
We cannot target specifically of looking to recruit any, any particular individual.
No, no, but can we set up a table at a college fair with a student body that is diverse?
So Anthony, we have, Ms. Fraser Woods is trying to reach out to schools. So we've given her the charge of trying to find schools for us to go to. These are the places that specialize in providing teacher education programs because we don't want to go to colleges that don't do that.
Yeah.
So, you know, if given the opportunity and with the staff and the administration, we'd be more than happy to do that. But right now, those are the opportunities that we have, so we're going to go at them.
But Ms. Fraser's not collecting any, any type of student demographics that's graduating from that college, right?
To be honest with you, we're not looking at it that way. We're going to the school and we're going to recruit the best candidate to come to Beacon.
Yes, and I, I agree with you there, but can we set up a table that has a teaching program, you know, that has also a diverse student body so that we increase our chances of meeting our goals, that we reflect the teaching staff to the student body?
Anthony, I think she said the one place that they're, they're aiming to go to a CUNY is not decided, seems to be not decided that that will happen, but that's one of the...
We're looking at the dates and teacher prep programs. And please, let's not make assumptions that the schools that we've talked about do not have a, a strong diversification of their teacher candidates. I don't want to make presumptions based on the school. We won't really know unless we go out and, and engage in recruitment process. And if we have opportunity to continue to build on that, or as we learn more about teacher prep programs, certainly amongst all of us that have been through programs and have been through a hiring process of candidates coming from a variety of, of programs, we're also looking at the quality of the preparation of the students. And so there's, there's many parts that are factors to this, but I don't want to make a presumption that a particular institution might not have a diversified candidate.
And forgive me, I'm not making the presumption either, but what I'm saying though is we're also not looking at it.
Anthony, I think we, we understand the point. Is there a question at the end of it?
Yeah, can we look at that?
I think they answered that question.
Is that a no?
That is absolutely not a no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, so Anthony, can we give someone else a chance first? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Now, I don't know if it's something, it wasn't up on the slides, but as far as a step in the hiring process, the collection of data, especially in those cases where somebody doesn't accept positions that we know, you know, if someone's, are they not accepting position because they're not paying enough, or they decided they don't want to work in a small city school district, or they heard bad things, or, you know, or we're looking at too many people who live outside the area that want to move into it, you know, so I think it would be important to know, you know, for those people who we make offers to and, or we want to make an offer to and they either decline or, or, you know, recuse themselves from being pursued further, just knowing the reasons why so that especially if these are the ones we really want, that we can, you know, where we have control of it, make the steps necessary. And it also comes into play for diversity too, because sometimes people ask the question is how we don't have a diverse population of, of staff. And, you know, you can point out things where you say, well, here's, here's the people that we did talk to, and here's, you know, here's, here's the breakdown as far as we can tell, then, you know, you can see if we're only, if it turns out that, you know, we're looking, looking at, trying to get to where our school population is, it's like, well, if only 5% of our people we even look at fall into a category for, you know, being, being a minority, then it's, you know, as you said, it's going to take much, much longer to get there. But just to, just to be able to show people, you know, what we're trying to do. And so I think, you know, collection of data on the, on the people that we're talking to is important.
I can't speak to historical, but I can tell you of the candidates that the superintendent and I interviewed and did employment offers to, when they didn't accept the position, it was due to salary. It was that we could not come to a mutually agreeable salary, salaries offer.
I mean, I think that's important because at some point you can come to us and say, you know, we want, we have these issues where we can't hire people because of salary. Obviously, that goes into negotiations and of course, that ultimately, the school board would have to agree to whatever the changes are in our contracts. And so, you know, we would need justification, so having that kind of data, it would be important.
So we can, we can collect it in a more purposeful way, but salary was the deterrent this summer.
Any other questions?
I have, I have a couple of questions. To the extent that you can speak to the work of Mr. Wright and how the gaps were identified in terms of textbooks and equipment, you know, the process that allowed that information to flow through to you? And then also if that kind of communication mechanism and structure is going to inform the district-wide curriculum committee?
So what, what, what we inherit, what we inherited in terms of summer were requests that, that were made that needed to still be processed. In terms of the process of how that came to be, that was reliant on, you know, the processes they had used through, through the spring and the summer. We took the recommendations of the department chairs in terms of these are the instructional materials that, that we need. They were not new purchased materials with the exception of Eureka Math, which did go through a process earlier in the spring with, with Ms. Calog, with administrators, with curriculum coordinators for feedback, and then we made a decision in the summer based on that. That's the only exception. The others were about the replenishment, replacement of what would have been shortage of, shortages of instructional materials. Specifically, I want to, I'll share with you just to reiterate, with regard to graphing calculators, it wasn't necessarily a identified instructional need that we can't begin the school year without, without graphing calculators. What had been happening was kind of the, working on getting them, tweaking them functional to some capacity. What I was learning was not every calculator had a viable screen. So some screens had components of it where, you know, it was blackened out or that. Mr. Riley and I talked about, and I said, tell me what is needed, tell me what the condition of all of the equipment that we have is, that we have at the moment, tell me how many we need. Because a graphing calculator is not a luxury, it's part of the necessary materials in math coursework at the high school level. And so we work to identify what were absolutely not functioning. We work to identify, did every student, regardless of the type of classroom that they were in, a general education setting or a special education setting, had access to that and had access to working equipment? And then that was a short-term need that we remedied quickly in September because it was not for me. And, you know, I come from a secondary focus of, of education, so that, that type of thing, understanding high school curriculum is, is an important question of access for our students. So I didn't want some of our students to not have the minimum standards they need for instruction. That's just an example. The others were things that were requests along the way that we moved to process. What we're looking for is a district procedure so that it guides everybody's planning, analysis and planning process.
So that sounds like it's separate from how the district-wide curriculum committees want to function?
Well, the district-wide curriculum committee will set what the parameters are so that if a department identifies a need, for example, the math department, they need the, they need to replenish this, they can move that forward. It will be based on, this is the data that informs that we have this need. These are the particular equipment that's necessary. Here's we've priced out, we've done comparison, this is, this is the request we're making. A district curriculum committee looks at that, reviews, ensures that every level has been considered so that when we move forward, you know, a purchase, a recommendation for purchase, that it's, that it's solid and is based on, that we know it's a need and not we think it's a need. So that, that's just a small example. Summer curriculum projects will be a big part of the work.
Hold on, can I just, can we go on pause because we do have a recognition, so they're not here so late, it's nine o'clock, then we can start the conversation back up after the recognition?
Yeah.
All right. Marty, are you presenting? Sorry for the delay.
It's a way for, and for pause for us, and I really appreciate that for education, Cecilia.
Get out, please.
But I have some of our physical education and health staff that joined us here this evening to, you're staying here by yourself? But I do appreciate the, some of our staff members that are joining us here on this special occasion. A few weeks ago on the election day, the Southeastern Zone, the AFRD had their annual conference. And at that conference, we saw the conference selects an elementary, special education, and secondary physical education teacher of the year of our zone. And this year, we're really, pretty neat that you have in your, in your district, not only Mary Ann Chirillo, who works on the AFRD board directors for the state, but we also have with us, come on now, will you say? Yeah, she's very humble. When I asked her if she wanted to show up, it took about an hour before she texted me back and said, okay. But we also have our teacher of the year for secondary education for physical education in the Southeastern Zone, Cindy Pomerico. Some of the staff members who've known Cindy for a while would like to just make a few comments and then I got to look into her.
I'm honored to be here tonight to recognize Ms. Cindy Pomerico as she has named the Southeastern Zone Physical Education Teacher of the Year. I've known Ms. Pomerico for close to 50 years as a childhood friend, we shared the childhood on Catherine Street in Beacon where our grandparents once lived. As a colleague, I worked with Cindy for 22 years during my career in Beacon, and shared 15 of those years teaching alongside her at Beacon High School. I've had the opportunity to teach with her, to coach with her, and to learn and grow from her, as she has always been a mentor and friend. I can say without reservation that she is undeniably the consummate professional. Throughout the course of her many years at the Beacon City School District, Ms. Pomer- Throughout the course of her many years at the Beacon City School District, Ms. Pomerico, Ms. P., or simply P. as the kids would have it, has modeled many life lessons for both our students and staff, as she possesses qualities of tremendous character. Ms. Pomerico is a dynamic teacher who cares deeply about children. Not only has she invested in the academic success of her students, but what truly stands out, and above all, is the long-lasting positive impact she continues to make in the lives of her students each and every day. She has many gifts. These are the gifts that are held in her heart. The gifts of care and respect, the gifts of compassion and empathy, the gift of selflessness and humility, the gift of firm affair, the gift of honesty and reliability, the gift of steady and consistent, and the gift of hardworking and committed. These are the gifts that she not only possesses, but the gift she gives away to her students and colleagues each and every day. Ms. Pomerico, Cindy, I'm sure you have many more years of teaching left in the tank, but just know that you will undoubtedly leave an indelible imprimatur in the history books of the Beacon City School District. Congratulations to you on this tremendous honor. Thank you.
It was really tough to follow. But I will say that I nominated Cindy for the award, and I have to remove myself from the selection committee as such, but I'm really proud that she was selected to receive this. And I reiterate just about everything that Kim just said, not with the same passion because I didn't work in the building alongside, but Cindy did mentor me, starting 22 years ago, when I started here, and she was at Forest, I was at Sargent, and we worked volleyball together. But mostly, the respect that Cindy both gives and gets to students in and outside the school building, on the street, they'll greet her and she greets them back, and there's just a relationship back and forth that she truly deserves to be honored as an outstanding teacher. So, thank you.
Well, I will just say one last thing. I was, I gave them a break, I think that was really nice, and everybody here, obviously. But I'll tell you, Cindy has been a saint for me. She has been my right-hand person since I've got here. Bounce things off her all the time. And I will just tell you, she is the epitome of the true teacher. She, she is just, has every student's in her heart, and she works very hard at what she does. And she is someone that, I hope we can just videotape her and just take her up to the AFRD conference next year. Wish she would take, take some time, get rid of that running for a little while, and come up and present some things up with that, and let her knowledge be spread around to the young teachers in the, in the state. Cindy, on behalf of the, of that staff in the Beacon City School District, I got you some nice flowers and honey.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. It was very worthy interruption. How would you do that any time? Cindy, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for speaking on her behalf. Susan?
Yeah, back to.
You lost your train of thought.
No, not at all. I, I just wanted to find out about the, the timeline for the PPS handbook, and if there is a, I know that so much has happened in that department, so I'm not trying to put pressure on you, I'm just wondering if there is a, if there's a timeline where down the estimated delivery date, and then if training is a part of it, you know, if they'll be training along with that, the rollout of that.
They'll go hand in hand. I don't know if Ms. Candello has a specific date in mind.
The interview guidance document that was created last year, I'm in the process of updating it right now, and they will receive it before, we start, we start talking about the interviews in December, January.
Right.
And halfway through working through the guidance documents in PPS, it's going to be a rolling document that's going to be in draft form as we keep working through the processes and procedures. And we are going to run that out in January with the components that we already currently have been working on, and knowing that we're going to keep adding to it. We're going to have a binder, a tangible binder in the building, and then as we build our website, we're going to include that for the teachers, so it's a book on our website.
So for those of you that couldn't hear, I'll just reiterate for, for everyone, so there's an annual review guidance document that will be in revision and rolled out to our staff between December and January, in, in advance of the start of the annual review process. The handbook that speaks to CSE process, procedure, protocol, forms to use, timelines, deadlines, all those things, is in partial completion, according to Ms. Candello. And it will be a, a evolving document, so it'll be a working draft document that we begin in implementation. And we'll probably look towards, once we begin a process of annual reviews, everything about systems and procedures are around the completion of the annual review process. So I would anticipate the, the general handbook probably towards end of the school year is ready for finalization.
And last question I have. So under special projects, Ms. Kellogg isn't here to answer this question, but I remember part of the description was that grant writing was going to be involved in her, in her work. I, I could have missed it, I didn't see anything with reference to that on the slide. Is that something that is in the works and is starting to be more encouraged in the district as a whole, as a way of, you know, you know, we face a tax cap, we have a diverse population, I think this could be a real priority, and it was heartening to see that that was going to be placed as a priority for an administrator. So if there's anything you can speak to about that.
Sure. So now, for each of our administrators, we captured some kind of the, the big bright spots, if you will. Ms. Kellogg has worked for us as a district on the consolidated application and Title One, Title One funding, writing. She is in, and has a responsibility of looking at future and available grants, and that will be a process. It has not been the forefront of, of her work over the last, over the last 10 weeks. Know that, and I was going to share this out as a report, but I'll, I'll put a place marker on this. Even though Ms. Kellogg has had other priorities of, of her work and responsibilities, we had opportunity as a district to partner with community-based organizations through SUNY New Paltz, through the Beacon City Recreation Program, and us as the, as a school district LEA, because there was an opportunity for 21st Century Federal Funding School Programming. It's an existing funding source. We have not accessed it as a school district, at least that we can go back over the last 10 years. But it has been, you know, a longstanding funding cycle. It's a five-year funding project. We wrote in collaboration with them for a grant that would enable us to provide along three, three required areas. Academic-based tutoring support for our students, which would be able to be provided through our own district staff. A social and emotional recreation-based program, which would be provided through Beacon Rec, as well as a youth empowerment and career-focused work, along with student mentorship, that's part of the collaborative with SUNY New Paltz. And so it's exciting, we actually just filed this morning, there was a noon deadline for all applicants. We had responded to a letter of intent several weeks ago, as you know. We look forward to doing a full-scale presentation of what this project could be, as we get further into the application review process. And we should know by March if we are a successful, a successful bidder for the, for the monies. I will tell you this, for us as a district, we wrote a project proposal for after-school programming, three hours a day, five days a week, for a 24-week period, that would enable all of our students and families in our five elementary schools that are, that are, five elementaries, our five school buildings, our three elementary schools that are Title One, our middle school, which is also Title One status, and our high school program, which is a recipient of all of the feeder school, Title One feeder schools. We will be able and will plan to replicate continuity of programs through, through district resources, so that Glendham students have equitable programming offerings. What it will do for us and what we're excited about with, with Beacon City and the Recreation Department, is that the barrier that we were recognizing with the cost of, of participating in programs will be alleviated with this funding. And so our families will have opportunity that their children can get three hours of structured after-school care and support and enrichment activities, along with academic support, free of charge. We wrote this project so it could serve up to 760 students across this district. At the middle school, high school level, that will look more along the lines of enrichment activities that will build off of our opportunities for, for STEAM-based programs, as well as college and career planning. There's a summer component, Dr. Seegerding stepped out, that would allow us to create for our eighth graders moving into ninth grade, opportunities for, for a summer skills and enrichment over the course of four weeks. It will give them opportunities to experience, for students and families, to begin to experience what college, college life is like, what the opportunities are, so that it builds a foundation to help support students through their years of high school. We're really excited about the opportunity. There's much more for us to present, and we will build off of the initial partnership to be able to expand so that we're inclusive of ways that we can draw in Beacon Arts Foundation and create new opportunities for our local artisans, for other, others that have skill and enrichment programming support. But that, that's kind of the structure and the framework, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Kim.
So this area, I believe, is covered by parents, so you may not have the answer.
Okay, I'll try.
But what is the process utilized for parent engagement? Are we being proactive, note, and notifying the parents? And can we paint the trail, our process, so that we can ascertain how well we're doing and get an information out to the parents, to ensure that they have ample amount of time to respond? And then my second question relates to PBIS, is they said it's, you know, allowing well across the district. How are we able to determine that it is? Like, it's a lot if I go into the middle school, and it's the elementary schools, but I don't, I don't see PBIS at the high school, so maybe it's somewhere that I'm just not looking.
So let me say this, every, every one of our schools is in different levels of implementation, and I would say, for the most part, many of our schools really are in early implementation stages. Here at the high school, there was a little bit of a slowdown, but I know that that's getting reinvigorated now that they're fully administratively staffed. Beyond that, I will ask, I can ask Ms. Kellogg to prepare, you know, some of the, the focus of the, the district, the district-level meeting conversations, and what some of the learnings are that are coming out of it. But yeah, I, please know, I'm not trying to represent that all of our schools are in the same level of implementation, or that those are fully in implementation. It's a, it's a, there's various levels of process. Each of our schools does have and has identified their three to five expectations. They're in various stages of how they teach that, how they set the, set the parameters of what it looks, sounds, and feels like, and how they celebrate the accomplishment of that for our students. We're in various stages of how we collect data, and how that informs the celebrations, as well as the targeted support that's necessary at a, at a higher level. But I'll get specifics for you from Ms. Kellogg.
What would your first question be, Kim?
Higher engagement.
Parent engagement. I'll, I'll get back to you on that one, too.
Okay. Any other questions? Anthony, what has, what has replaced OLVEUS? Or, you know, in a manner or a program?
So what we've asked each of our schools to do is to take what we were operating as two separate and unrelated frameworks and programs. So know that PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, is an overall framework of how we provide a, a system of behavior education, from universal expectations for all students at the base of it, setting expectations, defining those, teaching kids what it looks, sounds, and feels, feels like, and then recognizing and celebrating the demonstration of that. At a targeted level, it's about for those students that are unable to meet those universal expectations, how we provide for small group and, and, you know, kind of skill-specific support around building replacement behaviors. At a really intensive individual level, this is about how we do individualized behavior planning for some, for some students. OLVEUS is an anti-bullying program. And so OLVEUS is a component that can, is part of, of System of Behavior Education through that tiered response. OLVEUS by design was meant to really serve our students at an elementary, and we can put into, it expanded into middle school level. It's promoted as being accessible across K-12, but quite frankly, it was an elementary-based anti-bullying program to start with. What we asked each of our schools was to not continue having two separate committees that were doing this work, kind of in, in silos from, from each other, and to be, to work as a team, to blend the membership of those school-level teams, and to be able to talk about how OLVEUS, if they continue to provide that, or components of that in implementation for, for anti-bullying work across the schools, how that fit into the overall framework. If OLVEUS was not meeting what they felt was needed at their school level, what then would serve that need? Okay? So again, I'd ask of the district-wide meetings, the intention of that is to get kind of the litmus test of where are we at, what do school teams need, what data is informing the work that they're doing.
So I guess it's fair that it's in progress, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, it's fair to say it's in progress, and these things have to kind of be, they're homegrown. So it has to speak to what's going to work within each school setting. It's not really a cookie cutter approach. And when we try to do it from that lens, you know, it, it's kind of, it, it works in some places and it might not work in others. So we gave permission for the school teams to decide what their needs were, to blend them, so that we could speak one language of a whole system of supporting the behavior education of all of our students.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you, Cindy. All right, I'm going to review the agenda. We do not have any additions to the agenda. We are expected to take a second executive session with no action. So let's go from there. Do we have any student or school presentations?
Hello, my name is Gray Smith. I'm appearing today on behalf of advocates for Beacon Schools. And I'm appearing directly in response to a very thorough and very interesting overview of instructional services provided by the Stanford Ramsley, and we very much appreciate that. I was expecting a little more hiring policy-focused presentation today, so that's the primary area of my remarks. But there's a lot there that I think ABS will take a look at, and we really greatly appreciate the thoroughness of it. In terms of hiring policy, I was glad to see the process set forward in, in your PowerPoint, and it allows us to look at some areas of that process, that sort of structure that's there, where the board can step in and do some positive development to make the process work better for the district. You notice that the, the step process begins with a vacancy, as all kind of employment processes start with. But step two should actually be a very thoughtful and thorough evaluation of what the position is doing for the district, the performance of the individual. is doing for the district, the performance of the individual or the department under that individual's management, and what exactly the district needs from the individual that's going to fill that position. And I would suggest that it's one area where a board can play a role, not a very thorough role, not a role that requires a large amount of attention, but a role nonetheless, where the district produces something like a roadmap for that vacancy. This is especially important for higher-level administration, administrative vacancies, where the district can say, hey, look, we've done this evaluation of what the, what the position is all about, what the department, how the department is performing, we think we need an individual that has these characteristics, these experiences, you know, we are going to go through this process to find that person, and we think this process will work for us. We're going to have this hiring committee in place to look over, to make sure that we hire the right candidate. And they present all that as a package to the board prior to the start, prior to the actual posting of a vacancy, to say to the board, hey, look, this is what we're doing, and this is what we're going to move forward with. And the board, for most of the cases, will simply say, that's a great, the great idea, I like the process, I like the committee, let's move forward. But in those cases where red flags might appear, for instance, in this summer's process for hiring a new PBS director, we find ourselves caught out not having a PBS director hired, having to make administrative switches at the last minute that place a lot of the district in a, in a sort of up-in-the-air status, and frankly, kind of sprung on the board. Those kinds of, that kind of process is not good for a district, and it's not good for making good personnel decisions when you're in that position. So this would say, hey, if you're thinking about doing that, if you're thinking about hiring a new person, if you're thinking about going through that process, you have to, you have to provide that, that, a roadmap to the board that lays that all out for the board to say, okay, and you know what? It'll benefit everyone, because there'll be 10 set of eyes on it, saying, hey, wait, this might not work out for us. There might be a problem with this. Do we have someone who would fill this position if we can't find it? Are we sure we have a right position in mind for what you're seeking in this administrative role? You know, maybe we do need a special education director instead of an assistant director, and we can move right to that search and not have a search for an assistant when it wasn't necessary. So those are things that I would suggest that you take a look at. Secondly, and most importantly, parent involvement. One of the key stakeholders that we're missing in that slide is parents. They should be involved, and I completely agree that it's very complicated to figure out the right structure for parent involvement depending on the role, but that is a complication that the district just has to do. Principals especially should have a very consistent framework for how parents are involved in selecting school principals. Most teacher selections should have parent involvement, whether it's showing up and giving an interview in front of parents that were selected, not necessarily parents that are part of a hiring committee, but parents that are selected. That is one role that they can play.
Mr. Smith, can you just tell me, what district goes that?
Um, I, I actually came, I did a lot of work originally way back when in the Madison School District, for instance.
Where's Madison?
Um, Madison, Wisconsin. And they would often do district, they would do district interviews that would involve parents with, with teachers. So teachers would come in and have a presentation before parents. They were never part of the hiring committee, formally. And to a certain degree, the principal-level decision-making process makes it easier for parents to feel comfortable with the decisions the principals make. So if you have a good process that involves parents and selecting a principal leader of the school, it makes it less important to have teachers be there moderating, making decisions on the, on teacher hiring. That's not a role that parents can play, you know, they're not professionals. But it helps teachers understand what the hiring decisions and, and, and goals of that school are, are going to be, what the purpose and mission of the school is for the, for the teachers in the district. And it helps, and it helps the teachers recognize that there are actually committed parents in the school that they would be excited to work with. You know, it's a two-way street. You sell the district, and you give parents engagement in the process.
I'm sorry, I just got a short curious now. So is that the only district that you know of that does that, or are there other districts that you know that do that process?
I'll take a look. I'll take a look and see if I can come up with other districts. It's the one that I am familiar with, and I'd be able to, to say without a doubt.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to take a look.
All right, thank you.
And then for upper-level administration as well, having parents on the, on the hiring process, having parents in the hiring committees, makes a difference to make sure that parents understand that the, that the department will be responsive to parents' needs. And it brings into the, to the discussion, parent involvement in that process. It gives parents a voice in, in our, in our schools and how they're being administered. And finally, I would, I would say that you take a step back and, and you just look at what the hiring and personnel decisions mean for our district, and I want to end by actually recognizing what I think are some really great parts of that, that presentation. I think it's great to start seeing something laid out there for our missions and goals for instructional services and to get that discussion started with parents. We have active, excited parents in this district. I have parents come to me, I'm not even a parent in the district, I get in discussions with parents all the time, who are coming into this district saying, what's this district like? What is it like? And I always say, it's a very good district, there are great teachers here, the foundation is here, and that is what we have to build on. And to build on it, you've got to get teachers in, and you've got to get teachers in to every aspect of administration in the district. There's just no other way about it, because the, the parents that are coming in aren't going to, are not going to have it any other way. So I leave it with that and say-
I just don't want to streamline it to the parents that are coming in, there's been many people that stay in the district as well.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, what was that?
You're saying for the people coming in, people coming into the district, I just wanted to point out, there's many people that stayed in the district for many years as well.
Oh, yeah, no, what I mean was, what I meant was that, that many of the newer arrivals to Beacon, who may not have any understanding of what the schools are like, are, are presented with a district that is moving, I think is moving toward better parent participation. And, and that's the role that ABS has tried to play. And I think that this board, in a lot of what instructional services presented, can do a very good, very thorough job of just pointing out, well, here's something that parents could, could play a really active role in. Why don't we engage in this? Why don't we engage in curriculum instruction? Why don't we reach out to parents in some part of that process? There's areas where we can do a lot better, and it will make parents even more excited to be part of a very, very good school district that's only going to get better. So I leave it with that, and I say, to the board especially, I thank you very much for your comments, and I'm very glad to hear that you're going to be reviewing the hiring policy. I'll be probably back to talk about it when I see the details. I hope you don't get sick of me, and I, and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Any other parent groups? All right, Mr. Smith, you're only on the side for public participation.
Yeah, sorry, this is a, does anybody else want to? Is anybody else going? Okay. So this is very quick.
I just want to remind everybody for a public comment that you please refrain from using names and so forth.
Um, yes. Okay. My name is Gray Smith, I'm parent in the district, I have two kids that are prospective attendees. I'm actually here to speak on behalf of Initiative Kalam Community recently, partly because I have some expertise in the area about lead testing. And I wanted to say that I was very happy to see that the lead testing results had been made public, that letters had gone home. The distribution of those letters left a little anxiety among some parents, but I think the message got across, and it was good to see that all that was posted on the district website. I guess the good news was that the lead testing results show, were, were higher in areas of the schools that were not commonly used, which suggests that we have a problem only in areas where water accumulates in the pipes and doesn't get flushed. What I think is, would be helpful for parents in the district is if the district put in place some policies for flushing of water, fountains, of sinks in the schools that have these lead levels, I think even south, this would be useful to do, where before, after holiday, after summer vacation, when a lot of those fountains aren't used, that they are properly flushed before, which means running it for 30 seconds to a minute or more to get any lead that might have accumulated out, because some of the lead levels were very high in, in some of the sinks. And so we just want to make sure that that doesn't happen on the first day of school, and you have kids ingesting way too much lead. Secondly, I'd love to see any of the documents that the district has come up with. If anything can be made public about the sources of contamination for lead, what might have led to that, whether there's a broader sort of plan to remediate any of the sources of lead contamination, that might make a lot of parents feel better about the fact that the next time that they test is five years from now. So, we've just, if there's anything that would show that this isn't a problem that's going to become worse, you know, in the near future, that would be greatly appreciated. And then finally, I just have a question about Beacon High School. Is that exempt from lead testing, or are the lead testing results going to be coming for this, the high school? Should I take it seated?
Wait down.
Okay.
So, I can start with Beacon High School, awaiting the results. So, the secondary buildings didn't have to be tested until the month of October. In Dutchess County, I think all the school districts use the exact same lab, we all use Smith Lab, so I think that they were inundated with, you know, with results. So as soon as we get those results, we will be more than happy to share the results for Beacon High School as well. I will talk about the flushing of the sinks and the fountains with the Director of Facilities. The, the information that you, that I have on the website is what I have. I know that, you know, you probably know this already, too, but if you Google the information, there's a lot more information available. The state gave us information and made sure that we put out on the website, and we, and we did that as well. And I must say it now, so that I can say last during my report, but on the letter it did say, if you had specific questions, you could email the Director of Facilities, Mr. Savelli, he'd be more than happy to help. So particular, you know, if you had particular questions or whatever. I will say that Beacon's results were lower than other, a lot of other districts in Dutchess County, so we were surprised, you know, we were surprised because we do have older buildings, so, and we were happy about it. So other people are struggling with the same thing. So we're in the process of ordering the faucets and, and all the other equipment going through it, so that we can isolate those areas, and then they have to be retested, so those results will also be posted as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comments?
Good evening. Deborah Davidovitz, parent in the district, and here tonight to express my concern over the recent rise in incidents of discrimination and harassment occurring nationwide in our schools. We in Beacon are not immune to such acts, and we would be wise to act proactively to reassure our community of our commitment to keeping our students safe, respected, and welcomed in our schools. In Education Commissioner Mary Ellen Alea's words, "We must focus our efforts to ensure that our schools are safe havens, where students can learn without fear of discrimination, harassment, or intimidation directed towards students or faculty on the basis of their race, ethnicity, religion, immigration status, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or for any other reason." One concrete step that we could take to reassure families that all of our children are valued and safe in our schools would be to send a letter home telling them so. A letter home and posted on our website could also remind parents that they can review our district's code of conduct on our website. This document outlines what is considered to be inappropriate behavior while in school, reviews the repercussions of such behavior, and explains how a victim or witness to a violation of our code of conduct can report it. Too often, our students are led to believe that putting up with harassment is just a rite of passage, and too often, the adults in their lives respond to such harassment with statements such as, "Kids will be kids." What we are seeing happening around us and in our very own schools goes beyond kids being kids, and we owe our children more than that. I believe that a letter acknowledging existing and/or potential discrimination and harassment in our schools may help our families feel safer in sending their children to school in the morning, remind our students of the kind of behavior that is expected of them while in school, and clarify for our faculty and staff what they can do to help keep our schools a respectful and safe place to learn. Last week, Education Commissioner Alea sent a letter to New York State school leaders. This letter contains some important recommendations for how school districts can address, and I quote, "A number of disturbing incidents of bias and hate-based acts of bigotry, including vandalism, harassment, bullying, and even violence across New York communities. In closing, I ask the board, have our school administrators read Commissioner Alea's letter, and what steps are currently being taken to address this very serious issue." Thank you.
So I am happy to say that we do not have any incidents of, of that type of behavior here, and if you know of any, so, okay, so let me finish. So if you know of any as a parent, that the first place that it should be reported is to the building administration, but when we spoke to the building administration, we have actually one, one small event that was taken care of through DASSA. But I, I read the letter that, you know, that you're referring to, and I, I think it was very well thought out and worded, but I, I don't, I don't agree, part of what you said was, like, our schools, I don't agree with that part of it. So again, if, if you know of something that I don't know about, or if a child, we, we just went through a DASSA update for our staff, so that, to remind them of the procedure and, and part of that, but if a student feels at all harassed for any reason, they should be reaching out to their school administrators, and we would be handling the situation. So, I know you can't, I know you can't go back and forth, but I do want to say that we do value our, our children, not just in the, in light, you know, not just in light of the election, but all the time. So I, I know that it's kind of raised a little bit of concern in other places, but we have not gotten reports that it's occurring here. So, by your face, if you know something different, I suggest that maybe you recommend that these parents or students reach out to the building administration. Okay?
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, Jody Muffito, parent. Just a couple of quick things, but first I want to piggyback on what Deb said. There have been a few incidences that I've heard of. I know that quite often, especially young children, don't want to say that this happened, or don't want to say that I've been victimized, or don't even feel that they've been victimized necessarily. It's one of those things that kind of eats away at you slowly, without you even realizing that it's happening on occasion. And just to what was mentioned, I do think maybe a letter home, or actually, a cousin of mine lives in a school where last week they put signs leading up to the door of the school that just in different colored letters, you know, every race is welcome here, every ethnicity is welcome here, every, just to make the kids feel like, kind of like, instead of saying, okay, you've been victimized, and now we're going to deal with it, just kind of preempting it, saying, everybody's welcome here, everybody's included here, kind of spin it into a little bit of a positive, so I'm just throwing that out there. Another thing I wanted to talk about, I know that some districts have been talking about homework policies for elementary schools, and I think it might have come up here. I've been reading a lot of literature, and I apologize, I meant to print some out and bring it, but I know that there's been some literature on the effectiveness of homework in elementary school, particularly doing worksheets, when for one thing, that time could be spent running around, spending family time, you know, that might be a better use of the time at that age, and then also, younger children tend to need more help with their homework, not all of those children have somebody to help them with their homework. It might concern children at a disadvantage, so I was hoping that maybe that was something that we could look at as a district, how the homework policy in the elementary schools would work. And I also wanted to say real quick, I know that there was an issue this year with sergeant school with the kindergartens and the overcrowding, and I feel like, had that been handled earlier, it could have possibly been handled better before it became the situation that it had become. And so I wanted to know if, moving forward, there was a way to look at that. There's so much building right now going on in Beacon, and I drive around and I see all of the apartments being built and all of the, the new housing being built, and, you know, it's very probable that families are going to move into those, those apartments, and they're going to have children, and those children are going to need to go to- they're going to have children, and those children are going to need to go to school. And it would be great to have some kind of plan in place preemptively to know how we would deal with that down the road as the schools become more crowded. So, thanks.
Thank you. So I'll answer the homework policy. What I'll do is, Georgia's not here tonight, so I will let her know that there was a parent, public committee member that came forth and would like the policy committee, so we'll be looking at the policy committee first. So we'll look at that, and I'll bring that up to Georgia, that there was a question about it. Any other parent, public comments?
Joan Otway, her stakeholder. One request, maybe for the future, for slideshows that, the idea for this came from going to the comprehensive plan meeting that the city just had, which was, they put the slideshow actually up on the website, so that you could watch it on your phone. Because actually, I, I had a lot of trouble reading it. And it would have been great to follow it, even if it goes up, I mean, I know that the agenda has to go up on Friday, and slideshows may not be ready until close to the last minute, but there should be a way to just post that as part of the agenda at the last minute, so you could pull it up on your phone, which would just be fantastic, that's all. Secondly, there was, you said something about community, more community meetings, and I'm wondering how those will be publicized, so that people can plan for those in advance. And the third thing, and I wasn't, and I didn't follow the last meeting, so I don't know where this is at, but when you mentioned graphing calculators, what I found out is, oh yeah, there's this technology grant. And what I really love is if our kids had computers, and maybe there's a way some of that could be happening. So I'd love an update sometime not in the far future about that. Thank you.
Thank you. So Joan, just for the presentation, I did ask, as Cecilia was presenting, I asked Amber if we could get it up on the website, so people could view it afterwards. So they're going to import it up to the website afterwards, that component. And we are still looking into the technology committee, I think, that leaving next month?
Yes, I think in December.
December. I think they're meeting December, and that's something that we're going to be bringing up to the technology committee, either Anthony or myself will be asking for the smart button.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, see you none. All right. Amberi?
So my report is small, because I've already talked about a couple of things, so.
Do we have a teacher's section, or no?
No.
No.
You want to speak?
We put it with the parent, we put it with the school, I said student or school presentation?
Oh, I didn't catch that.
Okay, so go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, John Burns, President of Beacon Teachers Association. This is the first time in the school year that the Beacon Teachers Association has appeared before the Board of Education. We were cognizant of a period of transition with several new board members. Additionally, the new school year has gotten off to a good start. However, and unfortunately, we appear before you tonight because we believe that there are several issues that can no longer continue without being addressed. When the gentleman from HYA, the organization that is assisting the district with our superintendent search, met with the union leadership, he asked us what he perceived to be the biggest issue within the district. What was holding the district back from reaching its potential? Without hesitation, the response was communication. We believe that for too long, there's been a lack of communication within the district, a belief that has been echoed over the last year by many other district shareholders. The gentleman from HYA said that two recurring themes were present whenever he asked district stakeholders that question. Overwhelmingly, a lack of communication and a lack of trust were the responses that the vast majority gave. The gentleman asked two other very important questions during the time that we spoke. He asked what we thought was the most important of those two. Was it communication, or was it trust? What was the number one thing that the district needed to fix in order to move ahead? We strongly believe that there can be no trust without communication. And since that meeting, the Beacon Teachers Association has constantly advocated for more frequent, transparent, and open lines of communication with the district, with central office, with building administration, and with the Board of Education. Today, we met with three building administrators over issues, and in an attempt to keep open the lines of communication. But ladies and gentlemen, unfortunately, we have made very little progress in the area of communication, and I will address this issue again in a few minutes. What we can all agree on is that the Beacon City School District has the potential to be great, perhaps more so than any other district. We have the greatest potential for growth if we can resolve our issues of communication and trust. The second important question that the gentleman from HYA asked us was, would he be able to, with certainty, tell the new superintendent that the Beacon Teachers Association would be willing to work with him or her? And without hesitation, we responded yes. However, we can all agree that more than any other district, perhaps in the state, the Beacon City School District has a very tumultuous recent past. We've seen nine superintendents in just over 10 years, corruption in the superintendent's position, board leadership, and the law firm representing the district. And over the last decade, the Beacon Teachers have been harmed by all of these things. But it has been the Beacon Teachers Association that's helped. We're on a two-minute limit now, I thought that.
I got you in during the public comment.
What?
I got you in during the, oh, hold on. I got you in during the public comment. You missed a school and.
Usually, it's, it's teacher involvement, that's why I asked. And I, I were beginning the last meeting, I didn't know if we changed something.
Mr. Burns, we changed it, and it was on the agenda that it was the school and student presentation component.
We changed that to a teacher's section.
So if you reviewed the agenda for tonight's meeting, you would have saw that it was a workshop, review the agenda, student and school presentations, which you would fall underneath, the parent groups, and then open to the public.
I think, I just find it ironic, Mr. White, that we're talking about communication, and we're back to shutting it off again.
So communication has to be two ways, and I opened the door so you can come down, because you missed a component of where you want.
So I assumed I was under the timeframe of what we thought we used to talk about.
So I, that's why I said 20 seconds, to make it clear. If you want to hand in what you've written, we could definitely look at that component and look at it.
It's just a major disappointment on the part of the union that we keep trying to push this communication agenda. It's what the very thing that the gentleman from HYA said we need to fix to bring in a superintendent that can help, and we can't, we can't break through it. We can't break through it. We've got administrators that don't answer emails, you know, it's, it just goes on and on, and we can't get through that. And actually, I was going to address you in this, because we've had communication issues. But if you go.
I don't know if there's been communication issues that we've had, Mr. Burns, it's maybe difference of opinions.
I had, I had that, Mr. White, but it was down further in my reading, which would have been more than 20 seconds.
So to finish off the 20 seconds, and then whatever you have, we can further discuss.
I don't, I can't, I can't.
I'd like to make a motion to extend, to suspend the rules and allow Mr. Burns to continue his comments.
Second.
That was a discussion?
I think there was a misunderstanding, and I think that he should be given the time.
What was the misunderstanding?
When he should speak. Because it, because it used to say teachers report, and now it doesn't.
But was it on the agenda?
Yes. I'm just saying, I think there was a misunderstanding, and he'd be given the time.
And that's a, can we let him come up when that position passed?
I think the motion is, I think the motion that Mr. Wolf is making is a plea for flexibility in this one case.
So then, how are we going to determine when the flexibility needs to be in place and when it doesn't have to be?
It's the opinion of the union, the teachers union, so I feel like that's.
I'm just asking, so what's the, what's the criteria? We're having a discussion about it, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, what would be the criteria for then?
Well, I think that this would be really.
Hold on, Mr. Burns, we may act upon it, so it don't, don't see that, it's just that, we need to have clear operating understanding, and I just want to make sure that we're going that path. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think that in this case, if we're considering it, you know, the student, school presentation, then there really is no time limit. So recognizing that the agenda item was not recognized at that time, you know, if we couch it under there, then that really has the amount of time he needs in order to give his point across.
He would, but since that passive, that item, from what I was doing was, I saw that he did not come up, he asked a question, and I knew that we didn't go on to the interim superintendent report, so there was still time in the public session. So I, I said, why don't you come down now for that component? That was the understatement.
I think it's just a one-time pass.
Okay, so we had the discussion, so all those in favor of Mr. Wolf's motion to extend it and alleviate the three minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
So was seven to two, six to two.
Go, Mr. Burns.
I lost my place.
You were talking about HYA and the.
The new superintendent.
Okay. And as I was saying, we've made very little progress in this area. And I mentioned that the district has potential, but we need to resolve these issues of communication and trust. The second important question, I said, was that we would work with the superintendent, and then I talked about some of the issues that we've had in the past, and I think that we would be remiss if we didn't recognize those as we look to the head. I think the teachers have done a phenomenal job over the last decade, because as I was saying, despite all that had gone on, the teachers were able and determined to go into their classroom and offer the students the best possible education. We saw massive involuntary chances of teachers, which without a doubt were retaliatory in nature. And finally, last year, we witnessed an unlikely revolution, where several major forces combined to bring about drastic change. Some have voiced their opinions to just move on, but the reason that we bring up these examples is because we need to understand the obstacles that we must overcome if we are to move forward, if we are to effect positive change, if we are to become great. The Beacon Teachers know exactly why we are here, the students. Without the students, we have no job, we have no mission. But the students come and go, parents come and go, and certainly administrators come and go. So the one constant in the Beacon City School District for over 25, 30, 35, and even 40 years is the teachers. And yet, the teachers have generally been taking for granted in our district. Trust. We know that trust takes a long time to be earned, but trust can be lost in an instant. Some of you have asked why more teachers don't take advantage of this part of the agenda, to come up and talk about the many great things that the teachers are doing in our classrooms. It's trust. Communication and trust. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a lot of work to do. Some people are hopeful that the new superintendent will arrive and like a superhero with an S on their chest, make everything good in Beacon. That will most likely not happen unless we do whatever is necessary to bring about an environment of trust and communication. We can start to improve by having central administration, building administration respond to emails and questions. And they are not alone. Since the Board of Education members have gotten district emails, the Beacon Teachers Association has sent three emails to individual board members without a response. Two board meetings ago, the BTA requested to speak with the Board of Education on a personnel matter. We were told that the board would be surveyed. We requested an answer enough to dance to the meeting, so that we could know whether to prepare our comments for the executive session or for the public forum. We received a reply the night of the meeting at 6:56 PM, four minutes before the meeting was set to begin. Communication. We appreciate the stated intentions of the new board members who wanted to bring transparency, accountability, and a real sense of community involvement to the board. Those are admirable qualities. But in addition to policymaking and legislation, we had hoped that the Board of Education would have, wherever possible, corrected some of the many egregious wrongs that have been done in the past by our administrators, board members, and legal counsel. Trust. Last year, the district and the union had an agreement with regards to a veteran teacher who had been mistreated by the last two administrations. We agreed to correct those wrongs, but somehow that got so convoluted that it became unrecognizable by the Board of Education. And although, and although the Board of Education gave our last superintendent a $62,000 severance package, despite obvious and clearly stated conditions in their contract that should have prevented it, they cannot see fit to rectify a situation with a veteran teacher. The superintendent who received the $62,000 severance package served in our district without distinction for less than five years. The veteran teacher that the district turns its back on is entering her ninth year of service, and will most likely be around for another 20 to 25 years, and still, we have no answers. So we are out $62,000, and we have permanently fractured the relationship with a dedicated teacher for what amounts to be $6,000. Communication. Two summers ago, a 27-year veteran teacher in the district came to the Board of Education, and under the district's own whistleblower policy enacted by the Board of Education, told the Board of inappropriate behavior and actions by the then superintendent. The Board of Education did everything in its powers to make the situation go away, sweep it under the carpet, even in the face of overwhelming evidence that the accusations were true. To this day, several of our board members do not acknowledge the events. And after a year and a half, this dedicated teacher in the district has not been indemnified by the district per the board's own policy. The ex-superintendent got $62,000, the dedicated 27-year teacher doesn't even get an answer. Trust. The Beacon Teachers Association again declares its willingness to work with the new superintendent in a spirit of cooperation to bring our district to the level of greatness we know it can achieve. We just need a little time to work on communication and trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. I just want to state that there are some facts there that I don't agree with, that you may perceive as facts, that I know pertain to my communication with you, and I just want to point out that that is totally not true.
Did you send me a text at 6:56 PM?
Absolutely, as a follow-up.
Would I ask for it, so that I can prepare?
I feel like, okay, can I just say one second? Are you speaking on behalf of the board, or as an individual?
That was, because that was insinuated towards myself.
But I don't think that was clear from his comments, and so I think that in terms of.
It was.
I.
When I know the context that it was meant in, absolutely it was.
Well, you mentioned you sent it to a few board members, and I'm not sure.
Oh, you sent an email to the board.
Okay.
I'm, I'm saying that.
Intern superintendent report.
I want to start off by saying what a wonderful job our students and staff did in the production of Grease over the weekend. So I wanted to start with a happy note, and I'm hoping that a lot of people went to see it. It was very crowded on Friday when I was there, and I know that they worked extremely hard, and you could see that from the whole performance, every minute of it. Cecilia mentioned the 21st Century Grants, so I'm not going to mention that again, thank you for doing that, but we're all very excited about that, and we will keep you posted about the status. The lead testing, I spoke to during the public comment, and again, if you have any other comments, the high school results will be posted as soon as we have them, and if you have questions, please go on the website and get Mr. Savelli's email, or email me, and I can forward it to him directly. Lastly, I want to mention about the Vision Committee meeting. We had one last week, and we worked with a small group just to decide how to get the word out, to have the communication go out. We talked about getting, launching a survey, which is on the website, because there are people that just can't make another night meeting, or have other things going on that will deter them from coming. We're going to talk about involving our staff, having the meetings earlier in the day, but please reach out on our website and complete our survey. We'd like to get a good representation of all of the stakeholders in the district. Thank you.
Board comments. Kristen?
Well, first, I want, I just, the reason why I asked about the communication, reference to Mr. Burns' comments, is I think that we don't have to necessarily engage in a back and forth, this is his perception and the perception of the teachers, and they want to share it with the board, and I, I don't necessarily think it was clear that, that there, you know, the specific incident that it was you, and before we, in the back and forth with the teachers union, I prefer if we spoke as a board.
Sure.
So apologies for any possible inconsideration on my part. I'd like to talk a little bit about Ms. Davidovitz's comments. I, when I applied to be on the school board, I spoke about a project that I worked on, which was a mental health needs assessment of the New York City Public School kids after September 11th. It was meant to inform curriculum, and it was designed in concert between the CDC and the Mailman School of Public Health. 10,000 kids were surveyed, and the thing that was the most interesting is that there were schools around Ground Zero that received a lot of interventions, and, you know, once they returned to their buildings, or if they were displaced. Very much led with, you know, getting. Very much led with, you know, getting kids to talk about things, engaging in what was happening around the world and not inside those buildings necessarily. One of the findings of that study was, and often in the schools that were the hardest for us to gain access to because they weren't around Ground Zero, was that the incidence of xenophobia, the incidence of anxiety, separation anxiety, depression, were much higher in schools where the principal said, this didn't affect us. It just wasn't, we weren't nearby, we didn't even impact our building. I think in our district, there is the brick and mortar, but what our district really is, leaves these buildings and goes out into the world every day, and there are things happening in the world right now. And the goal would be to, as Mr. Rogers said, if it's measurable, it's manageable, to lead with discussing that. We have no idea how kids are internalizing these messages, the fears they might hold. It doesn't have to be presented from the side of politics, it can be presented from the side of culture, and it's something that I can say very specifically, I know that there was a lot of chatter in my kid's school around, you know, different issues that were happening outside the world. I mean, these are elementary school kids. And then just by a well-timed presentation from a man named David Chevalier, I hope I pronounce it right, from Songs Fund, which just happened to be scheduled for the Friday after the election, they talked about respect, about honoring one another, about your personal responsibility. I think the word bullying was mentioned once. It is on the Glennon Twitter feed. I saw a complete change in the kids, just what they were thought about, completely reframed, how they looked at themselves and the world, and all that other chatter stopped. And so I think that it's not to say that something wrong is happening here, it's to say, there's a lot happening around us, and we can only take responsibility for what happens here and what we, how we frame the discussion here, so we should do it. And then I did not have the chance to attend the comprehensive plan, but I'm hoping that some other members of the Beacon School Community were able to, because I really think the sooner that, just based on the discussion through the firehouse and through what's going on now with the comprehensive plan, the school is a part of that community, and I'm hoping that we can engage in a more sort of direct discussion as it relates to our purposes here. And that's it.
Mike?
From the Facilities and Operations Committee, I mentioned last time, we had met once in the next meeting. It's going to be December 5th, I think we're looking for an alternate date, so I can't attend it. But one thing I wanted the board members to think about, and actually even I would ask for the community, if there's ideas of, you know, capital improvement projects that we may have, ideas of things we may want to see in our district, it would be good to consider them and get them a part of a plan now, at least for consideration. One thing we talked about, the significant building in Beacon, maybe we need to consider where those pockets may be, right, in the planning, where those pockets may be, where our facilities are, and because we're going to be, it's a five-year plan that really starts in 2019, so you're talking 2019 to 2024, and that's very far out there, so we want to be able to try to consider some of those things in this plan. I wanted to say that there, I saw later down, later in the agenda, I want to say there's a good job with the CSE meetings, because if you look at the dates, they're all recent or future, it's not from six or eight months ago, so that's, I recognize that, we're seeing progress with those CSE meetings, so that's a positive indication. I was happy to see that. We think we had a comment, if there's workshops, if there's at all possible to have the slides ahead of time, so I can, we can look at them ahead of time and then pay attention instead of trying to read and listen at the same time, I think would really help. And lastly, with the Vision Committee, as we go forward, especially in light of, you know, Mr. Burns's comments, I would expect or hope that he would encourage the BTA membership to participate, you know, to actively get involved, because if we want to talk about communications, like we mentioned here, there's, it's going to be a two-way street. There's opportunity for them to provide, you know, feedback and input into these things, so I would hope that, I hope he would still be here, but that he would encourage members of the BTA to attend and participate, be part of that. That's all.
Craig?
Thank you. Nice presentation from Cecilia tonight, a lot of information in there. I wanted to say that I also appreciate the insights offered by Mr. Smith. I do believe that parent involvement can be upgraded. I've seen it work. I don't know that it goes comprehensively on everything, but I think that that's a step forward. We have, looking at his idea of a step two, that is where the board gets involved in an earlier stage, not sure exactly where that belongs, but once we see this in writing, we probably can pick it apart and find a way that the board can have some degree of input in an earlier stage. How much, I don't know, maybe it's just, you know, pass it through and say goodbye, continue, keep up the good work, or perhaps we have issues, but they need to be raised prior to the point at which it becomes effectively just a rubber stamp. So another step, I think, would be step zero, which is, when do you know that a vacancy actually exists? There's a problem with the system that everybody in the world seems to have, which is that they follow the standard HR systems, which are good as far as they go, and they start usually one step too late. What happens between the time when an actual vacancy occurs and when it becomes officially noticed is that the insiders get the inside scoop, and therefore, it is fundamentally unfair and cannot be made fair unless you get that word out publicly at the earliest possible opportunity that there is some kind of an opening potential. So I think we need to develop some kind of early warning notice that says, hey, we've got a vacancy. And what happens if we decide as a board that we want to talk about creating a new position, or if the administration wants to propose, or some faculty group wants to propose some new position, at what point does that become a public discussion? When it's too late, and when we have time to talk about it? What about when somebody is being proposed for not getting tenure? That's going to create a vacancy, probably. How do we handle that? So there's a number of questions here that I think need to be plugged into this matrix. Turning to happier thoughts, those don't require any additional work from us, that production of Grease was thoroughly enjoyable, and there were still some empty seats in that auditorium, I don't know why, Friday night anyway, but by the way, are we doing anything with regard to the sound system in that hall? I don't believe it's adequate. I think there's room for investment. I don't know if this is a capital project, or whether it's something that's being handled in a shorter range format, but that hall doesn't have an adequate amount of speakers to be able to carry everybody's comments. We seem to be making some progress in terms of the Sonizer system, you know, the audio, the radio system for remote microphones that are cleverly hidden on the singers, but there's a good deal of difficulty hearing all the words once you get farther back in the hall, and I've been in a lot of halls that have a lot better speaker system than that one. So I'll leave it to the interim superintendent to tell me if something's going on, or whether we should address that as a capital.
Well, I will tell you that we were, last year when we were lucky enough to get money from something in Scartados, that money was earmarked to do some major work in the theater. So I don't know if you remember last year, but I think we only had one speaker, which I believe blew in one of the spring concerts. So we did a huge upgrade in the theater. I know that on Friday night, when I attended, there was some feedback, but I think it was more microphones from the kids standing close to each other, but, I mean, I remember the way the sound was last year, so the sound this year I thought was awesome. I don't know, I could talk to Mr. Divine, who had the company come in and do that just to see. My understanding was everything was done with it. To me, it sounded a thousand times better than it did in the spring, because we had a lot of issues with the speakers and with the amplifiers, and there were things that needed to be upgraded. So are you saying that it's speaker, there weren't enough speakers to hear? Is that what you're... I just need to know the...
There's a much more sophisticated layout that can be designed by people who are really experts in this field, so I think we should probably have some experts look at it. I'm glad to see that there's some repairs. Obviously, bringing something back up to snuff is half the battle, but it might not be all we need. Otherwise, it's a really great hall, and I think the kids deserve the effort that they're putting into it, that we bring all the facilities up to it.
Anthony?
Before I do my report, Ken, you're covering George's report, you want me to do it?
I have George's report. I want you to highlight it, I gave it to him yesterday.
Okay, all right. I'll just cover mine. First of all, I'd like to thank Cecilia for her presentation. It was very robust for something that was within a short period of time, and hopefully we can continue working it over and we'll want the school to do the best it can be. I congratulate Cindy Pemarco for her work. I also want to report that I attended the Veterans Day Ceremony in Beacon, and at the end of the ceremony, I was asked about the veterans' tax exemption, so I asked Emery, and Emery informed me that the district had approved the exemption, but no forms are needed. If the town and city approves, the veterans' exemption will just provide the same. I attended the school play Grease. I'd like to thank the Beacon Players for the complimentary tickets. It was a great show. I wanted to commend the Beacon Players, including Scrooge, Divine, and the rest of the staff, and the students, both the actors and the support crew. I also like to commend the district on providing a more robust asset training to the staff on November 8th. I have a question about, when is the technology committee, and if I can get past minutes from their meetings? Also want to, this is something that I did back in September, which is kind of related to some of the topics that are coming up now, but I did sign on, I was invited by County Legislature Francina Amparo to sign on to a letter, open letter rejecting heat and anti-Muslim bigotry, and I joined 500 other elected officials across the country. It was penned by Local Progress, which is an advocacy for National Mexican Policy Network. So going back to the topic that's coming up today is, you know, I feel ignorance is bliss, there is a danger of underreporting for fear of retaliation. I do intend to make a motion that we discuss what the district action should be on that, and also, I would like the district to host something that's provided free by the county, a psychological first-day training, so they can come down here and teach a class to the community.
Bill?
Yes, first, I want to just kind of talk quickly about Mr. Davidovich's statement. I'm sort of going to emphasize what you were saying as well, Kristen. I'm always a little nervous when somebody brings up a subject that may not, that, they talk about specific incidents that are actually not happening currently in our district. I mean, sometimes people come up here and read the newspaper, and it's like, oh, God, there's a public thing that's happening here. So I, but I was, you know, I thought you were pretty clear that you were not talking about specific incidents here, just, you know, for the climate that's been cast by as a result of the entire election process. I do think that it's, you know, the way the election process went, the amount of publicity and the negativity in the campaign and some of the statements made by some of the candidates have sort of emboldened people that to advocate for and do things that are, I think, not in the kind of things that we believe our children should be involved in. So, you know, from that perspective, I think it is important, in this particular circumstance, to be somewhat proactive and perhaps have, you know, either let it go home or some sort of conversation with the students, just to let them, you know, know what is, what do we consider our behaviors that we want them to model, what do we feel is our beliefs that we want them to have, and just let them know that this should be a safe environment for them, and as a district, we should be doing everything we can to ensure that that's true for them. The second thing I just wanted to mention is, you may all have gotten an email, just in case you didn't, from the Dutchess County School Association, that the Thursday, December 1st, the guest will be Dr. Rick Timm, who's the Executive Director of the Statewide School Finance Consortium. He'll be presenting about state aid, how to read the state aid runs, what key items to look for, what issues arise, and how to identify them, and he's going to tailor his presentation for the Dutchess County Districts, so he's going to provide valuable guidance on how to evaluate your state aid, how it compares to other state aid, and how to advocate effectively for your district when it comes to time to advocate with our legislators as far as our state aid. If you want to come, they are asking, in this particular case, since they're assuming that there's going to be more people and only come to the meeting, is to RSVP by the 28th, so if you feel, if you get the letter, you can use the RSVP directly, or if you'd rather tell me, and I can just give them a count. It's open to any staff in the district, superintendents, board members as well, and we're just trying to get a count, because the room where we currently have meetings is, you know, really can't hold too many people beyond the normal group that comes, and they're looking to see if they have to have a different room at the policy facility. If you want to know more about the Statewide School Finance Consortium, www.statewideonline.org to find out more about them, they're a nonprofit organization, advocates for all school districts in the state as far as trying to get the appropriate levels of aid.
Thank you, Bill. Mary?
I also just wanted to thank Ms. Davidovich for her statement, and I think that it is an opportunity to be proactive, even if we don't have any stories, I mean, I guess that's good, but possibly not accurate. Maybe it can be folded into PBIS or something, but I think we, this is an opportunity, we should be proactive rather than reactive. I also, I was one of the two people to attend the Vision, Anthony and I, were at the Vision Committee meeting, and we talked a lot about moving forward, what we're going to do. I wonder with the survey, how the survey is going to be rolled out to parents? Will that be a letter or an email?
When we put it on the website, I have it rolled it out to the parents, so we can send it out via email, I can tell the building administrators we first rolled it out to the staff, just to make sure we got all the kinks out, because there was a little bit of a technical issue, so now that's all rolled out. I will figure out the best way to get it to parents. I'll put it on the Facebook page, I have gotten an increase in that as well. We're trying, we're actually working through our school messenger system just to make sure it's all up and running, just in case there's snow, because the weekend may be a little nervous about that, so if we get the text message portion or the email portion up and running, that would be a good way for me to do that, so, thank you.
Okay.
So I'm charged with reading George's report in her access. The following policies are being presented as a first read, so it would be Policy 1740, relationship with non-public schools, I'm loading a textbook slash software classified, Policy 1741, homeschool students, instructional materials loaned if available, maintain that homeschool students will not participate in intramural sports, extracurricular activities, school-sponsored activities, Policy 3100, superintendent of schools, Policy 3120, duties of the superintendent, part of our rollover of e-policy sections, there were no recommended changes here, Policy 4321.8, impartial hearing officer, appointment and compensation, classification of payment and cancellation of need for the hearing officer was addressed, Policy 6700 is purchasing, recommended changes from order report, Emery can speak to this if needed, Policy 6650, the claims ordered up, stipend position, Emery also can speak to this if needed, and we are requesting that the first read is way for the following policy, 11, is that correct? 11212016? That's a lot of numbers.
11212016.
Thank you. Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 and Section 54 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, this policy was out of date, this policy was out of date and bold changes. The next policy committee meeting will be held on Monday, December 5th at 7:00 PM, and I did make a note that the policy committee should take a look at the fourth policy in elementary schools, so that's a note for George, so that we can discuss that at the meeting. So that's a note for Georgia, so that we can discuss that at the meeting. For my own activities, I was fortunate to attend the Board Officers Academy. I found, I found it very fulfilling. There was a lot of information in there. I just wanted to know what my role was as a vice president, and so that I could be user-friendly for the board and find ways to bring about cohesion amongst us. So there's a lot of reading. I did make copies to share. And there are some little activities that if we have time, we could, you know, do at a later date. But it was a very, a very, very good event, and I appreciate going. I have questions about Grow Your Own, as the students are always the main focus of what I do while I sit here. So just get them a status on that. Naviance is something that has been on my radar for more than a year. So this November is now a year, and I don't, I don't understand, like, where we're at with it. And I want to know where we're going. So I did a little bit of research on Naviance. And I just want to say that it is a comprehensive K-12 college and career readiness solution that helps districts and schools align students' strengths and interests. So it helps parents and students, high schools and middle schools. Neighboring districts are utilizing Naviance. If it is something that the district is going to consider, I would appreciate possibly, I don't know if I have to make a motion to have a workshop on Naviance, but if that is what I need to do to get it on the board, so that we can take a look at it, to afford the teachers and the parents the ability to have a program that seems to be very effective. There isn't an issue cost to that. I did look at that. And then there are ongoing costs to keep it flowing. There is training. But this is a matter that has come up, you know, more than a year ago. And I believe had some substance to it, presented as a reasoning behind it. And I think that, you know, we all say that, you know, Beacon kids deserve better. And I think that we do deserve to be aligned with our counterparts in other districts. And we need to afford the administrators that are willing to put in the work to give the students the best opportunities. And if we can shape and identify our students from the middle school and have something, a profile for each one of them going throughout high school, I think it would enable the guidance departments to work more effectively and efficiently. So just let me know if I need to make the motion to have that happen. I did attend Grease. Again, kudos to the parents and teachers, and to the students who worked very hard to put that together. It's always a phenomenal time for me to watch the students perform and bring out the best. I, you know, commend the community who always shows up for these events and supports them, and all of the many volunteers that go in to make it each day a success, from the vendors to the custodial staff. It's just good to see it and makes you proud. And lastly, for Ms. Pomerco, like, kudos to her for her success. I'm really happy to see, you know, when they stand there in unison, together, supporting one another. I think that my, I've been fortunate in this district to see teachers that support each other, that stand by each other, to lift them up, to push them forward, to encourage them. And so if you see that amongst the teachers, you know that they're spreading that amongst the students. And for me, it makes me proud as a parent and as a member of the school board to continue to see that. As it relates to any emails that I receive specifically addressed to me, I've answered all emails that have sent to me. Whether they are nice or not, I find that anyone who takes the time out to write something to you deserves a response. So that the record reflect that anything that is sent to Kenya Gazdan, Kenya Gazdan will answer. If there's something sent to the board, we now have an established communication policy that is set up to give that person a response back within a timely fashion. And that's all I have.
Can I answer some of, I know some of the answers.
Thank you. I like when I get answers.
So Kenya, Grow Your Own. We are still in the process of trying to find out where the program is at Marist. And we're going to reach out again to Dr. Sullivan. The person that was spearheading it from Marist College was doing it as a doctoral portion. And we do not know who is in charge of it now. So we will call again and find out. And the other part about Naviance, so the good news is our guidance coordinator is, this year, is Anna Orlando. And she's done a great amount of work about Naviance. She sent both Cecilia and I a new proposal. She sent us a whole memo on how it would roll out. And she's really trying, instead of doing it mid-year, she's trying to get it started so that we could do the training in March, April, and May, so that it could start up and running in July. So we're investigating, going through a Bosse's Coser, so that we can get Bosse's aid. But she did a lot of legwork for us, so I really appreciate that from her. And we're going to include it in the budget process. So stay tuned, okay?
Yay, go students!
I just have one comment, and it's in regards to the Reclaim New York lawsuit that was filed against the district. And this statement is on behalf of the board. The Beacon City School District was recently named in a lawsuit by Reclaim New York for not complying with the Freedom of Information law foil. It is with regret that the board, as well as the district administration, acknowledges that this was an oversight by the district. Since the suit has come forward, the district has released the information requested to Reclaim New York. The information was sent to Reclaim New York on Wednesday, November 16th, 2016. The district was, has reviewed our foil procedures and will strive to implement them in a timely and responsive manner with regards to all future foils requests. It is the board's goal, as well as the district administrators, to be transparent with the business of the district. We will continue to work towards this goal. Right now, we do have some foil requests that we are working on. But we did look at the procedures as to how we respond to foil requests, and we do strive to answer them in a timely manner. So we can't turn back the clock, but we did give them the information that they requested. Anybody want to bring anything up for unfinished business?
So I would like to make a motion for a special meeting, to have a special meeting on November 28th, where we will meet with HYA to, and they'll present information on their search to us. So it would be a special executive session, no action taken.
Six o'clock start?
Six o'clock start.
Yeah, the audit committee is at six.
So you can make it at seven?
I think seven's okay.
I don't know, we crossed out seven.
Hold on, does she have a second?
I gave a second.
Can you give a second?
I have a dump for six, but...
Yeah, I do have a six, because we had a seven.
Yeah, I had a seven.
What do you have, the...
Audit committee.
Six?
When we got...
Six to seven. I think it's probably fine.
We could do seven.
Yeah.
Check with...
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of the special board meeting, November 28th, at seven o'clock start?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Unfinished business, I'd like to make a motion to discuss the safety officer and the status of it.
Does he have a second? This is the SRO?
Second, I'll second with that.
Ken, so Anthony, SRO?
Yeah, in the board, before I became part of the board, there was discussion about meeting with the mayor and talking about an SRO. And it is my understanding that the city actually is applying for money to fund the SRO?
They applied for a grant. And I was told recently that they didn't get the grant.
Okay.
But both the mayor and the chief of police are still very interested in getting an SRO. The district would have to make a commitment, probably, in regards to maybe paying 50% of the salary and benefits. They would have to hire an officer. So we're still in that part.
Hold on one second, Anthony, we're jumping down. So there was a motion for, to discussion. Can you second it? All in favor of having the discussion?
Aye.
Motion opposed, motion carried. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Are you done?
You're done.
So, yeah, I don't know. I, for some reason, I don't remember this topic being fully vetted at the board. Maybe it was, and I wasn't there. But I do have concerns about an SRO in the school. For example, our policy 5300.60, you know, allows the student to be interrogated. They're not entitled to Miranda-type warning. They're nor contact with the student parent before questioning. But if that's done in front of an SRO who has arresting powers, and they admit to a violation of the law, it does, I believe it does obligate the police officer to make an arrest. I think that's one, just one, that's just one bad example of, and I'm sure there's probably a lot of good examples where SROs are helpful. I would like to look into this more and make sure that if we do bring on an SRO, that it's done right. An SRO is there really to enforce the law and not to enforce the school policy. I also don't want to, you know, create an environment where it's, you know, school to prison by going.
We're not, well, we're pretty...
We're not? The motion was to have a discussion on it. You want to have the discussion tonight, or you want to have the discussion in future board meetings to put it on for a discussion? I don't think that we're all going to have all the information on SROs to have a worthy discussion tonight. So I took that as you want to add that on to a future board meeting for a discussion.
Sure. I mean, it sounds like this, it's not, it's not something that has legs at the moment, but it's been sought to have legs. I would like to better understand the need for an SRO, what the parameters are for the SRO, benefits, restrictions, so that we don't, we don't exercise an SRO in a bad way. You know, if it is any benefit, we do it in a good way.
Okay. Anything else that anybody wants to forward?
Is this a similar, we had an officer in this student high school for years. And I guess he retired or something. So is that the same, similar position we're talking about?
He was a youth officer in Beacon Police. He was not paid for by the district at all. He just happened to be here a lot. But the city of Beacon is struggling. They have one youth detective right now, who is also shared as being a regular detective. So he doesn't, you know, have the time to just spend with the school district. So that was actually a luxury at the time. We didn't have any financial responsibility, but he was able to come to the district.
But he was here, and I don't know if he was affected. I mean, I don't know what his actual duties were, but I think there was a model of, example of it happening in the past. And so Anthony's concerns sound like, you know, by incorporating this, it may have, you know, may not be, maybe some difficulties in, you know, clarifying his roles and responsibilities. But we've done it in the past, if it's a similar type of...
Well, we haven't had an SRO. So he was a, he was a city of Beacon police officer in the youth division. There were two in the youth division at the time. So they could spend a lot of time here. An SRO model is a little bit different. And I don't want to speak to it without really doing a little bit more research.
I think we could look at other districts that have SROs. Get that information to see how they utilize that safety school resource officer. Good, thanks. And that's some of the things that we'll look together for when we have, when we put on for a discussion.
Sure. I appreciate it would be a future agenda.
Okay. Anybody else have any unfinished business? Okay. I heard a call.
No, I just was thinking about the diversity committee. Did you establish what we're going to do with that, or got resolved? Like, I'm a little...
Yeah, so there was a mix-up. In terms of diversity committee, there was a mix-up with the, I guess, when we meet December. So Meredith says she's fine with December 5th. Would you be fine with December 5th?
But the duties, like, we were supposed to split the data so that we can do a possible workshop on the information, right? So that's what happened in December, right?
Yeah, I was saving up for the committee meeting.
Right, I thought we would go over that at that committee meeting. I mean, I, hopefully, we would already know what our, what data we were going to be kind of focusing on so that we could bring it to each other.
We can get that out.
That's something that we have to work on as the diversity committee.
Yeah.
Okay, the consent agenda. So the use of the consent agenda permits support education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relative routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular case of business on the consent agenda may do so, indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Does anybody have anything that they want pulled?
Anthony, just for a point of clarification, I'm trying to find where new business is. Did we delete it?
They did not put on new business today. If you review the agenda, if you still see a section on there, it's because, one, I didn't see any new business component, and so I didn't get an email about new business. So we kept it unfinished business, because I know that you communicated that you wanted to have a discussion about the SRO. So that's why I wanted to give that.
Okay. I mean, during my report today, I also mentioned that I wanted to bring something else up in the business. So if it goes on the, I don't know where it goes. It's not unfinished business.
So if it's not, if there's no new finished business, you can make a motion at any point in the meeting. But can we finish the consent agenda first? We started the consent agenda, so we still have to go forth, and we're going to, we have a proposed second executive session, then we have that component. So you could bring that up. But I want to bring it up right in the middle of the consent agenda.
All right, I'll bring it up after 11:00.
Is there anything else said? Is there anything that wants to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Mike?
11.07, 11.09, and 11.14.
Anything else?
11.10.
Craig came, you said by 11:00.
11.10.
11.10?
Yeah, homeschool.
Anything else? I'm going to pull 11.04D3 and 11.08. We'll start with 11.04D3. Oh, hold up. Hold on one second. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda minus 11.04D3, 11.07, 11.09, 11.14, 11.10, and 11.08.
So...
Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Mike, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. I need a motion, I need a motion for 11.04D3.
Motion for 11.04D3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All those opposed? I'm understanding.
Oh, okay.
I need a motion for 11.07.
Motion for 11.07.
Kristen, I need a second.
Second.
Kenya Gazdan, comments or questions?
On the, on the budget transfers, okay? Page 2 of 3. It's the, it's the second page in the, actually, it's the first page. The bottom of the first page is a transfer, there's two transfers I want to ask about. The first one is $400,000 between those two accounts. I'm wondering what the transfer is for.
Which number is it to the left?
It will be, well, there's, it's 817. Okay. And then it's, I can tell you, it's Alpha 2110-130. Between 120 and 130.
I can answer the $400,000 one. A2110-120 and A2110-130 are both teacher codes. One is in elementary, one is the secondary. So it was, it was a matter of teachers being, the way it was budgeted, it wasn't broken out. In total, it was correct, but in between the two budget codes. So we're taking the money from 120 to cover 130 to make sure that people, we're trying to budget the teachers' salaries in exactly what they're doing, the secondary or not.
From elementary to secondary.
Elementary to secondary, correct.
The next one is, well, the total is 363,000 dollars. It was 2110-161 to 164. Or the other way around?
16, yes. So 161...
Two, oh, it goes all the way down to... Two, oh, it goes all the way down to 2250 dot 151.
Right, so when we're doing, when we're doing the budget in February and March, so we're budgeting in certain, those are all payroll codes, so the goal, this, the goal is to make sure that the actual people that we hire are in the correct code, and sometimes when you do the budget, you're not anticipating exactly how it's going to be filled, so that's in and out. It's not an adding of staff, it's just making sure that the money covers into the budget code where they're being appropriately charged. So that's why you see a lot of ins and outs, but if you look at the second group of numbers there, so you see 160, 160 are civil service staff, 150 are teacher staff, so that journal entry covers all of the codes to make sure that there's enough money in the budget code because the teacher salary is, is already being charged to the budget code. Does that make sense?
Okay, it was different because it's from 21, 2110 to 2250.
Right, but that's not, so that's not a directed 2110-164 and 2110-165, so I'm at 84,000 or that?
No, the 362, 363,000, so that was 2110 dot 161.
Right, that looks like a teaching assistant code because it has to do with putting money into a reg, one is regular ed, one's specialized, so to make sure that the people working in the positions are being charged to the right code, and then the money follows to make sure the budget code is appropriately covered.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, veto. Need a motion for 11.09?
Motion for 11.09.
Kenya, is there a second?
Second.
Bill? Comments or questions?
On 11.09, a question on the wording, this was 1740. Okay, on the, under instructional computer hardware and software loan, it states, and it's just, the wording didn't make sense to me, the board recognizes it's right of responsibility to loan instructional computer hardware and software upon request of all pupils legally attending non-public elementary or secondary schools located in the school district. And I just, I'm just asking if that statement is actually correct because it's-
If you don't specify elementary and secondary, they could consider preschool.
To all pupils legally attending non-public elementary or secondary schools located in the school district, but if they're outside the school district-
It's the district that was finishing.
The school is inside the school district, but we only loan computer hardware and software to students that live in Beacon that attend the school inside the district.
So it's students located in the school district, not the schools located in the school district?
No, the school's in, the school's here, so we have a non-public school here, but we only loan hardware and software for our students because these non-public schools actually have students from other districts. It's their responsibility to loan instructional computer hardware, software.
I think, I think an example would be the best, like, if there was a student that was attending a parochial school here in Beacon.
In Beacon.
In Beacon, the district where that student resides from would be responsible for buying textbooks for that kid.
It's where you live.
So the branch into that, Mike, is let's say that the student is classified and goes to school in Beacon, then it's the district of locations responsibility for some components of that because they would create an ID ESP, but it's, it gets confusing, but it's the district of residents.
That word, right, correct.
Legally attending, yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Now, maybe just, I just want to jump on that. It says to all pupils legally attending, does that mean that when you say legally attending means they're in, they're a school district resident?
Legally attending, um-
I mean, is a, is a student from outside a district who's attending that school, are they considered legally attending it? I mean, isn't that, is that word?
My, my interpretation of legally attending would mean that they're a Beacon City School District resident going to a school within Beacon. I mean, the wording could be a little bit different, but this is the legal-
I mean, because really, it's like, all, all, it's really, it's all, all pupils of the Beacon City, residing in Beacon City School District, attending non-public elementary or secondary school located in the Beacon City School District, or in our school district or whatever, right? I mean, it's, there's, there's two things, as you mentioned, there's one is the district, the student has to be a, a resident in our district, and even that's kind of iffy because sometimes there's people that are residents here, but they're responsible in another district too, so I mean, it can get even more complicated, so I don't know what the exact wording is that.
Well, the intent, and the, I mean, the textbook and instructional computer hardware and software loan, the process is only for Beacon students because the essence is that you pay Beacon taxes until your child is eligible for transportation textbooks. If you think that wording is different, then we should change it.
Well, yeah, textbook does say to children residing in the district, you know, it just says any public and non-public school because, so, I mean, there's only really one restriction for the, for the textbooks, it's they have to be a resident of our district. We don't, you don't, there's two restrictions for the software.
So for example, we have loaned computer equipment to a non-public school within Beacon, but it's hardware, so we would give them the number of hardware that they need per students there, but I can't guarantee that only our students use the, you know, so it's a little bit hard.
Right, but we have to pretty much ask how many of, how many students do you have who reside in the district, and that's how many we give, how they use it after that is, we can't, we can't, we can't control.
Right. So I don't know if you-
So the language is okay, or would you, we may have to take the-
Well, it sounds like it's correct, written correctly.
As long as people interpret that word of pupils legally attending to mean someone who is a district resident.
Right. And that's consistent with what Ms. Paulson said. It's not like we totally adjusted it and said, hey, let's just throw the word legally in there as a policy committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. So 11.14.
11.12, you were going to first?
Mike's calling 11.09.
I took it as the way they reported off. Any other motion for 11.14?
Motion for 11.14.
Kenya, a second?
Second.
Anthony?
My question is, I think that we had some kind of an assessment that we were, you know, we need to enhance this policy.
No, this is, this is the new policy.
New policy, so does this-
So the old policy was extremely short.
Right. So does this meet all the requirements that we committed to for this policy?
Yes, and on top of that, I also have the regulation, and I have a checklist that will be attached as well, and the checklist will define exactly what was in the report and what, you will start seeing the new checklist, and the internal claims auditor will be using that checklist that will help support everything that we put in that document for the state controllers office.
I have, I have a question about that, just, this is just a point of clarification that I'd like, does the auditor, are they supposed to deliver that report to you first or to the board first?
Internal claims auditor does it directly to the board. I don't have anything to do with it.
Okay, so the report that we received, was that something that was delivered to the board prior to my joining the board? The last, the last meeting?
The controllers office report?
Yes, that's, that's-
That came out in June.
Okay.
Yes, so that was an audit that was done in the spring, and it wasn't clear that things went directly to the board. Our internal claims auditor's been doing it for many years, and he hasn't come to the board meetings, and they found that certain things, although he might look at them, aren't documented in an appropriate way, so I had a, I'm going to update the checklist. He does have a checklist, but we were trying to use the new forms that are on the website now that we run off of New Vision.
So now it would go, he would deliver that report to the board?
That, that always goes, it goes to the district clerk.
Okay.
And then it, I don't get involved in that at all, even before. It goes right to Kelly, and then Kelly puts it on.
Thank you.
And the comments for 11.14? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, veto. 11.09?
Motion for 11.10.
Kenya, a second? Comments or questions?
Some of the question here relates to the part about students who are homeschooled cannot participate in any intramural sports, extracurricular, or other school-sponsored activities. Pretty broad.
They're not allowed to participate in, say that again?
It says, "The district does not permit homeschooled students to participate in any intramural sports, extracurricular activities, or other school-sponsored activities." Is that what we really want to do? I know there was a debate on this about a year ago in this board, and I realized that interscholastic sports, there's a commissioner's regulation on that. I should mention that it was approached by a parent, shed some light on this. Apparently, his son was able to enroll in an interscholastic sport even though homeschooled until it was found out he was homeschooled, and then he was off and was rather disturbed at this, so it sort of raises the question, this is not so much policy but implementation. How do we monitor this to make sure that we don't have the unfortunate circumstance of somebody-
Craig, I think you have an answer for that.
The, the, the choice of interscholastic sports is not our choice, so that is dictated. The student was, we didn't know that the student was homeschooled when it, when they registered, so we're not allowed to, so that's different. So the only thing the board's discretion is whether to allow homeschooled students to be in intramurals or extracurricular activities, and I know that conversation was discussed at great length both ways, so this, this policy has been on and off for first read probably at least five times. But the thought, the thought process was with the policy committee was that a homeschooled student would, you know, would be difficult for them to come and join extracurricular activities if there was a school play, whether or not, you know, that would fall under extracurricular activities, and whether or not it would be fair if they're not attending school during the day, if they should be able to come and do that. That was kind of the discussion of the policy.
Are they paying taxes in the district? These are people that reside in the district.
Yeah, one of the thoughts were, because, again, originally, like, it flowed, and then there was more discussion on it, and what, what was found in the discussion is that a homeschooled student would take away, possibly can take away the lead in the play from a student who's actively involved and engaged at the school, and so when we looked at it from that window after the discussion, it, it made some sense that the, the student that is here, involved daily, should have more access to those things, and that right should not be taken away from a student who, you know, because the student is homeschooled. Like, we, at first, we didn't want to take away from the homeschooled student, but then when we looked at it from the other end of the spectrum, it, it made sense to lend itself to allowing the, those students not to participate in that way in fear that it would, you know, take away from a student who was actually here.
So theoretically, though, based on this policy, then kids who reside in the district and pay tax, their families pay taxes in the district, couldn't do an after-school intramural program, just like basketball or something like that?
We've had discussion, this policy, as Emery said, but anyway, so it's, we, the policy committees adjusted it based on what the board actions have been, so now it's okay, don't include them. Last time, include them, it didn't pass. This time, that was the one focus that they had, was send it back to the policy committee and not include them.
It was tough to decide that.
So, so new board, it's new members of the board, it could go back to the policy committee, so either way.
I also just want to mention that we have recently had large residential areas that have gotten tax exemptions, and so you now have people who are residents and families who potentially are homeschooling their children and not paying taxes.
Oh, I'm going to say also that, you know, I, you know, I think it is a good discussion to have, you know, in a survey of other school districts, there are some school districts that do have, that don't allow the homeschoolers to do anything, and there is, there are some school districts that, there is some metered participation from homeschoolers.
All those in favor of 11.10?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
Do a roll call, please. Sorry, go.
Mrs. Flynn?
Opposed.
Is here.
I didn't vote the first time. I'm opposed.
Mr. Rakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Singh?
Both.
Mr. Wolf?
Both.
Mr. Zoff?
In favor.
Mrs. Gadsden?
In favor.
Mr. Wade?
In favor.
Then we'll go back to policy. 11.08, I need a motion to accept 11.08.
Motion.
Anthony, second? Meredith? I just want to say the thanks for accepting the donation, and I just wanted to acknowledge All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I need a motion to adjourn to executive-
Well, hold on a second, could I make a-
No, Anthony, it has some questions.
Can I? I'd like to make a motion that the district reaffirms student safety following the election.
Say that again?
I'd like to make a motion that the district reaffirms student safety following the election.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion, because I want to specifically talk about the election. There could be other stimuli that are-
Hold on one second, Craig. You seconded, correct. All those in favor of having a vote? Say the motion again.
The motion is for the district to reaffirm student safety following the election.
To reaffirm student safety following the election.
There's a discussion before we vote, right?
Yes, there will be discussion before we vote.
Make a motion to amend the motion and to remove, you know, as an applicable body, I think removing any reference to the election. I mean, we need to reaffirm, I believe we need and should reaffirm student safety. We should reaffirm our policies. I think that is necessary, but I believe that, well, okay, so I-
Make a motion.
Make a motion, so amending the motion to remove the reference to the election.
So the motion on the table now is to reaffirm student safety. Is there a second for Mike's amendment?
Second, yeah.
MR, Bill's alt, I got Bill for a second. Comments or questions to Mike's motion, which was to amend Anthony's regular motion to reaffirm student safety following the election. Mike's amendment was to take off following the election, just to reaffirm student safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, veto. So the motion, Kelly, was to make a motion to reaffirm student safety. I need a motion to go to an executive session?
Motion to go to executive session to discuss.
Wait, hold on a second. Just stated purpose.
I was getting ready to say, all right.
No, my motion's still on the table. Did we accept it already?
I thought we accepted the amended.
We amended it.
She amended it and accepted it, voted on it.
So we're going to have discussion and have the, either the board affirm or deny?
We did.
We just did.
We affirmed the amended motion to, reaffirm student safety, and we did, we amended it by taking off following the election.
So the main motion is reaffirm student safety, so then we need, that's the motion on the table now, right?
So you want to discuss, you want to discuss how, you want to discuss the process right now, is that what you said? That's what you said?
Yeah, I think the motion's still on the table. It was a motion to amend the motion. We didn't decide on the motion.
All right, so now we need to vote on, uh, the questions.
Comments and questions.
Comments and questions.
Reaffirm student safety.
Aye. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, you know, we, a couple weeks, I mean, like, about 12 days ago, parents been coming to me discussing that their children were negatively affected by the election. Also, just as, as early as last Thursday, again, more parents and- Also, uh, just as, as early as, uh, last, um, Thursday, um, again, more parents and staff have been asking whether the district was willing to put something out. I circulated to the board, um, what Dutchess Day School has sent out, they included it in their newsletter, uh, New York City, um, Education Department had a sample letter that they circulated among their administrators, uh, Randolph School, um, also I circulated that to the board, um, and then Red Hook Central School District sent a district-wide message, uh, which is only three paragraphs, three short paragraphs. I think it's something that, um, the district should do. I don't think it's something the district should wait for complaints to come through. I think, um, we shouldn't be behind other dis, other schools, we should be, uh, leading other schools. Again, like I said in my comments, is I feel that, um, that, that, you know, there could be some underreporting and students need to know and apparently be assured that the district will do what they have to do, um, to make sure it's a safe haven for them.
Any other discussion?
Do you have a specific text for a statement, Mike? If you want to just grab, uh, Red, Red Hook School, Central School District?
I have Red Hook.
We could just copy that. If you're comfortable, we can send it from the board and not, not superintendent, um...
Well, these letters came from the superintendent.
So it's up to you.
I, I think it'd be more appropriate to come from the superintendent, from the board.
Okay. Did you read it?
Sure, I can.
It's four paragraphs, yep.
I mean, did, do we, maybe just let the superintendent write something that's, you know, appropriate for our district?
I think Craig is, Craig seemed to enter it to the public record though, right? So you want it to be read out loud on the, and recorded?
Yeah, I can read it out loud. Um, so it says, "Dear parents slash guardians, I think we can all agree that the recent presidential election has, comma, times, comma, taken on a tone of deep sensibility that is counter to certain aspects of our mission as a school district, parentheses, i.e. developing respect for others, comma, a sense of personal responsibility, comma, and an inclination to be honest," end parentheses, period. "We all know children can be quite impressionable and learn much from the environment around them. There is concern that some students in our learning community may feel less secure as a result of the election and worry about the implications of being who they are," parentheses, "example, disabled, comma, female, comma, Hispanic, comma, transgender, comma, et cetera," close parentheses. "I'm writing to allay these concerns and reaffirm our district's commitment to standing firm against bullying and harassment of any kind. All children deserve an environment free from anxiety and fear. Rest assured, we will be vigilant in addressing any poor behavior related to election results. I thank you in advance for supporting our efforts to create a safe environment for all children. Regards."
So it sounds like that was very much specific to the election. And that seems to be, there's a certain level of discomfort since we voted in favor of Mike's amendment to the motion. Um, but I think we can, you know, it's kind of an open secret that there's been a catalyst for, um, a permission structure that's been created. We don't have to acknowledge it if we're fearing seeming too political, but I think that we can say current cultural events or, um, you know... What, Craig, would you like to?
So can I, can I just interject a little bit? So Dr. Severding, um, on the website, he has graduate lab bulletin, um, which has been on his website since last week, and he has a principal message that talks about the presidential campaign. Um, it doesn't talk, it, you know, I think the, the letter that you may want me to draft might be more general in nature about talking about, but, um, I'm not going to read it to you, it's on the website, but it does talk about presidential campaigns, it talks about different beliefs, it talks about, um, how the students here have been talking about treating each other with respect. I think he did a great job, he showed it to me before it went out, um, because especially at the high school, the conversations are happening, and I agree that they're happening all over, um, but if the board has done something to reaffirm school, student safety, I can make the, the letter to the parents be a little bit more general, but if you want to go on, Dr. Severding did do a great job in his letter about addressing, um, you know, the conversation, and it does speak about the election. So I mean, he owned that, he asked me if it was fine, it was, it was done in very, very good taste.
So the discussion was to reaffirm student safety and that's what's on the table. So we had discussion about that component, it seems like now we're talking about processes about how to do it, so let's vote on the discussion, the motion to reaffirm student safety. Are we, uh, all in favor of reaffirming student safety?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carried. I would like to ask that, since that motion passed, Anthony, since you've made the motion, if you could give us something that you would like to see written up, like you've read and you've referenced the Red Hook one, if you could share that with the rest of the board and then we could take action as to...
I mean, to me, if it's coming from the superintendent, if it is superintendent's job to work, not ours, I mean, we're, you know, nine people, we might have nine different opinions on what it's going to be, and it's ultimately, if the superintendent's sending it out, it's, it's, it's on her shoulders and, and, and she's going to have to, you know, live with the consequences of, uh, you know, any, any comments that come back from that, and I, I think she, you know, I mean, I mean, I think it's, it's a kind of, I think we delegate to the superintendent and we trust that judgment.
I don't mind writing it, I mean, I, I, I'm not going to use Paul Finch's letter without asking him, I believe he shared it as an example, um, but I don't want to do that and, you know, it does talk about the presidential election, so I can use this as a guide and I can do, I can make a draft of, in a more general term if that's what, you know, you guys voted on, so.
If you want a motion on, to, to just have Ann Marie send the letter and so on?
I don't think we do a motion.
Don't need a motion?
We're very passionate, just, just we're talking now.
I need a motion to propose first the second executive session?
I was doing it, but you didn't like it, so you do it. Go ahead.
You know what the subject, you have to invoke the particular subject, so please go ahead.
Someone read it. To review the employment history for a particular individual on the board is not expected to take action after executive session.